Can we start the Zoom webinar, please?
Webinar started.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Zoning, the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. Please silent all electronic devices at this time. Also, please do not approach the desk. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. One of us is Sergeant at Arms will kindly assist you. Thank you very much for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee, and I'm joined today by Majority Leader Farias, Councilmember Moya, Carr, Hanks online, and Councilmember Shonelman and Mar Morado within the chambers. Today, we are holding a public hearing regarding the administration's Bronx-Metro-North rezoning proposal. The proposal consists of several rezonings within the 46-block area, a zoning text amendment that will map MIH areas, and establish the special East Chester-East Tremont Corridor District, and several proposed changes to the city map mapping, new street networks, and a pedestrian plaza. Today, we were here and discussed the entirety of the administration's proposal, but we will hold an additional public hearing later this month regarding the proposed street mapping actions. Today's hearing is being held in a hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or on Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council's website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse. To sign up, or for those of you here in person, please see one of the sergeants-at-arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Members of the public may also view a livestream broadcast of this meeting at this council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until they recognize by myself to speak. When you are recognized, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like to submit, the Subcommittee can consider. If you have written testimony you would like to submit instead of appearing in person, please email it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. Written testimony may be submitted up to three days after the hearing is closed. Please indicate the LU number or the project name in the subject line of your email. As part of the registration process for today's hearing, council has made and continues to make efforts to facilitate language translation services upon requests. A multilingual livestream viewing option is available online at the council's website at www.council.nyc.gov with audio translations in Spanish and Bengala. For individuals with, excuse me, for individuals who would like to testify and require translation services, please indicate so on the speaker card. If you are here in person, or if you plan on testifying remotely, please request translation services online. Registration form available at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by myself as council members may have questions. Lastly, for everyone attending today's meeting, this is a government proceeding, and decorum must be observed at all times. Members of the public are asked not to speak during the meeting unless you are testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who are called to testify, and no video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recording to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. I will now open the public hearing on the pre-considered LU's relating to the Bronx-Metro-North rezoning and text amendment proposal. The majority of this proposal is located in Majority Leader Farias and Councilmember Mar Morado's district. A small portion is also located in Chair Salamanca's district, who has just joined us online. This is a proposal by the administration to provide more jobs and housing around the four new Metro North stations that are scheduled to open in the Bronx in 2027. These Metro North stations will finally start addressing the public transportation needs of the Bronx, especially in my district and Co-op City. As with the opportunity, both the new stations and proposed upzoning around the Morris Park and Parkchester Van Ness stations raise a lot of questions. At the top of the mind is the need of address the demand for additional parking that the new stations' proposed upzoning will generate. A lot of the people who will use these new stops will drive to these new stations because it's simply not feasible to get around northern or eastern Bronx without a car. Where will all these additional cars park? Also additionally, stations will be of little use to our seniors if they cannot access the station. In addition to the BX23 and without reducing frequency of the BX23, a shuttle service needs to be provided for Co-op City that will bring our seniors to the new station. I am looking forward to hearing today from MTA and the administration about these fundamental issues. Today is also an opportunity to discuss the administration's planned zoning changes, which will facilitate more than 7,500 new residential units around the proposed new stations at Parkchester, Van Ness, and Morris Park. The Bronx does not, the Bronx, excuse me, the Bronx does need more housing, but housing alone is not sufficient. Families and neighbors need more than just housing to thrive. If you are going to bring more people into a neighborhood, you need to improve existing infrastructure to address the frequent flooding from heavy sudden storms that we are experiencing. More park spaces, schools, and increased funding for our fire and police stations is also needed. The Bronx is open to development, but it has to come with actual sufficient investment in our communities. The city does not invest in the Bronx, and that needs to change, starting with this proposal. Today, we will hear the Department of City Planning along with the MTA, the Department of Parks, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Environmental Protection about the proposed new housing and the new stations. I encourage my colleagues and the public to voice our collective concerns about parking and the need to upgrade our sewers, our streets, our parks, and our schools. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit a written testimony, you can always do that by emailing it to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. I would now like to give the floor to Chair Salamanca to give his remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree. I think your opening statement hit on all of my talking points. You know, at today's hearing, one of my concerns that I have, not just in the South Bronx, but in all four Metro North proposed stations, is the parking situation. And there's an ask from my office that the Department of Transportation do a study to identify potential maybe parking right locations, or identify other areas where New Yorkers and Bronxites can park. The other concern that I have is the density in some of these proposed rezonings that's being proposed, and the lack of communication through those direct community boards for these specific projects. So I look forward to hearing from the administration and the developers who choose to develop at these proposed sites. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair Salamanca. Councilmember Mar Morado.
Thank you, Chair. To the residents of District 13 present here and watching online, I stand before you as your councilwomen, sharing a vision for progress and development for our beloved community shaped by the promise of the Metro North stations and the transformative opportunities they should bring. However, as we convene to discuss the proposed redevelopment, it is crucial to address several pressing issues. A new plan for development must strike a balance between growth and preservation, ensuring that new construction complements rather than overwhelms the existing environment. The proposed heights of some developments reaching up to 25 stories raise valid concerns about density congestion and community character. While we recognize the need for increased housing supply and economic development, these heights need to be drastically cut, and we must approach vertical expansion, wood caution, and sensitivity to the existing fabric of our neighborhood. Also, two specific sites on our rezoning has been asked to be removed from the proposal, yet they still seem to be a part of your plans. Most importantly, when it comes to this development, we need more home ownership to be incorporated into any project that this rezoning will bring. Home ownership is a key pathway to growing the middle class. By building wealth for my constituents, they will achieve economic stability. It will create civic engagement, lower crime rates, and will increase the health and environmental benefits. Absence of parking mandates presents a significant challenge for many in our community who rely on vehicles for daily transportation. While we welcome the expansion of public transportation options, we must acknowledge for some, private vehicles remain a necessity due to work obligations, family responsibilities, and accessibility needs. Without adequate parking provisions, we risk placing an undue burden on these individuals, forcing them to choose between mobility and livelihoods. We are not there yet as a community to remove such mandates. Also, when it comes to parking, consideration in and around the stations needs to be taken very seriously. Such a large-scale project will increase the demand for essential services, including Department of Sanitation, New York City Fire Department, and our New York Police Department. And as our population grows, so will the need for more frequent waste collection, enhanced fire protection, and the increased police presence to ensure public safety. This heightened demand necessitates careful planning and investment in our infrastructure and service to prevent this strain on existing resources. Regarding the Department of Environmental Protection, the Bronx has experienced significant flooding issues due to heavy rains, particularly from Basset Avenue to Williams Bridge Road between Pellon Parkway South to Silver Street and Pierce Avenue. This raises concern about the current sewer infrastructure capabilities to handle the increased usage due to new development. Without strategic investment in infrastructure and comprehensive storm warning management systems, we leave our community vulnerable to devastating consequences of flooding, including property damage, economic loss, and threat to public health and safety. Furthermore, Baker Avenue currently presents a safety hazard as a one-way street, and the increased traffic from new development will exacerbate the issue. Given the expected rise in traffic due to the Metro North stations' associated developments, I need the DOT to consider making Baker Avenue a two-way street and possibly widening the street to improve safety and traffic flow. Our Parks Department also plays a vital role in maintaining adequate community. The proposed development will increase population density in the Bronx. From the beginning, I have repeatedly brought up that the current and existing open green space in existing parks is not enough for an increased residence, and we must find more open space. Also, existing parks, my existing parks, are due for major renovations. And while I remain committed to the vision of progress for our district, I cannot in good conscience support a plan that neglects these fundamental issues. I will fight tirelessly to ensure that our concerns are heard and addressed in the Metro North redevelopment proposal. I hope that city planning will work honestly and transparently towards the proposal that embodies the true values of District 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will now call on the applicant panel for this item, which consists of Paul Phillips and Michael Cavalar. Council, can you please administer that affirmation?
Could you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record? Do you swear the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and in response to Councilmember questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for the viewing public. If you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I'll just ask that you please re-estate your name or organization for the record.
Good morning. My name is Paul Phillips. I'm the Borough Director of the Bronx Office, Department of City Planning. Good morning to Chair Riley, Chair Salamanca, Majority Leader Farias, Councilmember Mar Morado, and members of the City Council. Today, we are pleased to present the Bronx Metro North Neighborhood Plan. As you all are aware, part of MTA's Penn Station East Side Access will bring four new stations to the East Bronx, Hunts Point, Parkchester Van Ness, Morris Park, and Co-op City. Recognizing the extraordinary opportunity to complement these new transit stations with home, jobs, and community amenities, the Bronx Office of the Department of City Planning has worked collaboratively with local residents, city and state agencies, and authorities, and elected officials to develop the Bronx Metro North Neighborhood Plan, which represents more than six years of planning work and outreach. I am joined today by Michael Cavalar, Senior Team Leader and Project Lead for this study, who will walk you through the proposal, as well as colleagues from the MTA, DOT, DEP, and the Department of Parks and Recreation. I will be happy to answer questions at the conclusion. Thank you in advance for your time and for your consideration.
Good morning. So I'll go through this presentation. I know the councilmembers are familiar with many of the aspects of it, but for the benefit of the public, and yeah, and then we'll happily take questions. So good afternoon. We're here to present a project overview of the Bronx Metro North Study and the associated zoning map changes, zoning text changes, and city map changes that are part of the proposal. We'll just briefly outline the larger goals of the planning work, and then we'll discuss the proposal as certified. Next slide, please. So here we have a map of existing transit connections. Today goes without saying, today the East Bronx lacks these regional rail connections. Next slide, please. New service will mean improved connections and greater accessibility to the city and the region. This means more choices for where Bronxites may choose to work, live, and enjoy themselves, as well as significantly improved connections from the region to critical medical research and jobs institutions within the borough. Next slide, please. Here we have a map showing the four stations. New service has also represented an opportunity to plan together to thoughtfully integrate these new stations into the fabric of the communities they'll serve. Over the past six years, the Department of City Planning has worked with the MTA, community members, area institutions, agency partners, and many others to plan around the coming stations. Next slide, please. This work has included developing a joint vision for what it means to create new front doors to these Bronx communities and a world-class entry point to one of the city's most important job centers, as shown in this conceptual rendering of Morris Park. Next slide, please. It also means strengthening job centers by allowing them to grow, while also allowing for the growth of housing and retail needed for the success and growth of our Bronx employers, as shown here on this conceptual aerial sketch. Next slide, please. It means mending seams between communities created by a history of inadequate public infrastructure and facilities. And here we have a rendering showing potential vision at Parkchester Van Ness. Next slide, please. As well as allowing for a mix of housing and retail near new rail service and areas of the city that have seen little such growth. And here, finally, we have a rendering sketch showing potential future at Parkchester Van Ness. Next slide, please. As we can see on this map, the four stations span areas that are quite diverse and distributed. As such, planning work over the years has taken a station-by-station approach. Importantly, while planning work has and will continue to proceed around all four stations, the land use actions contemplated as part of this application relate specifically to facilitating a series of proposed land use changes at the Parkchester Van Ness and Morris Park station areas. Next slide, please. As we can see on this map, these actions span the Bronx community districts, three Bronx community districts, nine, 10, and 11, and would facilitate the development of some 7,500 units of new housing, including up to 1,900 units of permanently income-restricted housing in an area of the city that has seen little such growth. These actions will also support the growth of some 2.5 million square feet of commercial and community facility uses, as well as an estimated 10,000 jobs. Next slide, please. These actions consist of a series of zoning map, zoning text, and city map amendments that together aim to promote the growth of housing and retail, strengthen job centers, promote industries of the future, and create an improved public realm. Next slide. This proposal builds on a number of principles established over the years. Next slide, please. And these principles, in short, aim to create a series of compact districts around new transit. And now I'll step through each of the proposed categories of changes. Next slide, please. Starting with our zoning map amendments. Next slide. Here we have a map of the area of the proposed zoning map changes. The larger study area was further broken down into a series of sub-districts to help structure the proposal, and in recognition of unique goals and challenges in each of these areas. These districts include a station-adjacent sub-area at Morris Park, where we propose a C44 district with an R8 residential equivalent. A transitional residential sub-area meant to respond to the surrounding lower-density neighborhoods, and where we propose mapping a combination of R6A, R61, and R72 districts. A transitional mixed-use area where we propose mapping full C43 and C44 commercial districts, which also have residential equivalents. A high-density residential sub-area near the future Parkchester Van Ness station, where we propose mapping an R8 district, R8X district, apologies. A station-adjacent retail area where we propose mapping a C24 commercial overlay to allow for a bit more retail near the future Morris Park station area. An automotive sub-area where we propose a minor change in parking regs from the existing C81 to a C82 district to encourage transition over time to neighborhoods serving retail uses in those areas. And then finally, one large opportunity site at 1601 Bronx Dell Avenue, where we propose mapping an M11A industrial district and an R73 residential district. Together, we believe these changes will help facilitate the development of vibrant mixed-use districts centered around new transit access in a way that is both respectful of the existing context, while also leveraging the opportunities for growth presented by this unique and historic addition of rail service in these neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So now we'll discuss the zoning text amendments. Next slide, please. Okay. The department here proposes the following zoning text amendments. First and foremost, the establishment of the special East Chester-East Tremont Corridor District, the establishment of the R61A district, the application of mandatory inclusionary housing, also known as Appendix F, the extension of the transit zone, and the removal of language applying exclusively to C84 districts within special plan community preservation district areas. Next slide, please. So here we have a map showing the special district boundaries, as well as the sub-districts and sub-area within it. Generally speaking, the special district seeks to promote the growth of housing and employment centers around transit. It seeks to foster an adequate range of services and amenities for residents, workers, and visitors, ensure a lively and attractive urban streetscape around the stations and along major corridors, and create a cohesive pedestrian and public realm network that would better connect future developments with future station areas and surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide, please. There are a number of provisions of the special district text that seek to support residential growth specifically, as laid out on the slide here. Next slide, please. There are also a number of special district provisions meant to encourage a lively public realm around the special district. Next slide, please. And finally, a set of provisions meant to support the existing and growing job center, particularly at Morris Park, through a number of provisions. We are happy to discuss any of these in more detail, but for the sake of time. Next slide, please. Here we have a map showing the proposed boundaries for the mandatory inclusionary housing area. In an area of the city that has seen very few mandatory inclusionary housing areas mapped since the program's creation nearly a decade ago, and few affordable units produced, the Bronx Metro North Plan proposes the largest mapping of MIH since the Drome Avenue Study in 2018. It's worth noting that currently Bronx community districts nine, 10, and 11 all rank in the second half of Bronx districts for housing production. Next slide, please. To complement the MTA's work in our own proposed land use actions, DCP also proposes a series of potential public realm improvements around each of the station areas, as well as five specific city map actions intended to facilitate aspects of that work and which are part of the proposal before you. Next slide, please. Here we have an aerial sketch showing a potential future at Morris Park. At Morris Park, in addition to the wider range of proposed improvements here, three city map actions are the subject of land use actions contemplated as part of this application. Highlighted in pink on this diagram, they include an action to facilitate a future public plaza at Morris Park, an action to facilitate the widening of Marconi Street to allow for sidewalks on its western side, and a mapping envelope to facilitate a potential future extension of Marconi Street to the north to solve for longstanding transportation issues in the area. Next slide, please. Similarly, here at Parkchester Van Ness, we have an aerial sketch showing potential future here. Beyond the series of proposed improvements to the public realm, two mapping actions included as part of this application are intended to facilitate aspects of this work. These include a demapping action to facilitate public realm improvements and create a more regular parcel, shown in blue on this diagram, as well as a mapping action to extend Pierce Avenue into the large site at 1601 Bronx Dell, shown in pink, and meant to provide for public access into the site and a potential third station connection, as well as publicly accessible open spaces totaling some 30,000-plus square feet. Next slide, please. And so with that, we'll just summarize quickly the proposal. Next slide, please. Again, these actions include a series of zoning map, zoning text, and city map amendments in Bronx community districts nine, 10, and 11, intended to facilitate the growth of housing, retail, and office uses near new transit, including up to 7,500 new housing units, some 1,900 permanently income-restricted units among them, as well as up to 2.5 million square feet of commercial and community facility uses, 10,000 jobs, and a series of public realm improvements. These actions taken together will help to ensure that the future stations are thoughtfully integrated into the fabric of the communities they'll serve, that longstanding gaps in housing production, including affordable housing near the station areas, are addressed, that institutions and employers are poised for growth and success, and that Bronxites are well-positioned to take advantage of these opportunities. So, next slide. With that, we'd just like to thank the councilmembers again and for your time, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much. And really want to thank you for the outreach you've been doing in our communities as well. We really appreciate the workshops that we've been hosting in collaboration with our land use team. Really appreciate it. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, the Bronx is open to new development, and we need more affordable apartments for our families. But we need more housing for families and housing that families can actually afford. So with that being said, for the affordable housing that will be created, can the administration require more two- and three-bedroom apartments opposed to studios?
So, thank you for that comment. We certainly appreciate and hear the need for larger apartments, two- and three-bedrooms, and certainly will take that information back to HPD to consider as new development comes online as part of the proposal.
How will the city ensure that the affordable housing will actually be affordable? Because 60% AMI, which is approximately $93,000 for a family of four, is well above the median income for this part of the Bronx. The affordable housing has to be at least 40% AMI or lower for it to be actually affordable. 40% AMI for a family of four is approximately about $62,000.
Thank you for that comment. Duly noted. Certainly appreciate and understand the importance for a range of housing types and AMIs, and certainly lower AMIs. And again, we will take all this information back, communicate that to HPD, certainly take that under consideration for all new developments and proposals as part of-
And HPD's not here today, right, Paul?
No, they're not here today.
They should be, so.
Understood.
As I also mentioned in my remarks, you cannot just build housing. If you're going to build more housing, you also have to provide more parks, schools, and libraries. You also have to improve the neighborhood's infrastructure and provide more funds for policing and firehouses. So let's address this one by one. Will new park spaces be created, not just open space on private land?
Thank you for that question.
Is Parks here?
Oh, they are here.
Can they come up?
Sure, absolutely.
He was about to hit me with the same line.
No, a different line.
Okay. All right. So is Nick?
You're ahead of us, Nick. Could you please state my name for record?
Hi, I'm Nick Mulnery.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your remarks today and in response to the chair's questions and other councilmembers?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
How you doing, Nick?
Good.
So will new park space be created and not just open space on private land with this project?
Thank you, councilmember. As Parks Department acknowledged the importance of open space, parks, and plazas, we've been working collaboratively with our colleagues at city planning to ensure that the open spaces that are part of the plan are as accessible and large as possible, and look forward to continuing conversations about open space needs within the districts.
Will the administration then be at least improving the current-
continued conversations about the needs as part of the proceedings.
All right. Well, we're going to be very passionate about this in the Bronx.
Understood.
We do understand that the Bronx, you know, plays their part with ensuring that we're building more land, excuse me, with more housing with the land that we have, but we want to make sure that we're taking care of the infrastructure that's around. We have existing parks in those areas, we have existing streets in those areas, schools, libraries, firehouses, police houses. We want to make sure those are taken care of as we're adding this very important project that we all want to see coming to the Bronx. So, before I continue my question, I just want to add that, okay? Have you surveyed the park spaces around the rezoning and assessed potential improvements in the area?
We've been part of the collaborative process with City Planning over the last few years, have been in all of the engagement meetings about open space, and have heard from community members about needs within the existing parks and needs for additional open spaces. So we have an open ear and will continue to have an open ear through the process. Haven't had a specific on-the-ground proceed, survey that Parks has led though, but we've been very collaborative in this process.
I do have specific, for examples, do you have any recommended improvements for Burns Playground, Gibbons Square, and Loretto Park? If not, can you provide those to us as soon as possible?
Thank you. We will look into those three sites. You said Burns Playground, Gibbons Square, and Loretto Park.
Yes.
Thank you.
And is it your position that the park space in this area does not need improvement?
No. I think park space throughout the city needs improvement, it continues to be used and needs improvement, and we look forward to seeing how these spaces can be improved through the process.
Thank you, Nick. Has the administration committed to providing any additional schools within this project?
Thank you for the question, council member. So we've been working closely with our partners at the School Construction Authority throughout the planning and environmental review process to identify potential school seat impacts. We have been, we have been and will be closely monitoring to identify future school sites and plan appropriately. SDA and DCP will continually monitor development here to track construction activity and project potential future school needs and respond accordingly.
Is it funded and when will it be provided?
Thank you for the question. We certainly will take that back, and certainly as we move forward, we will provide more details on school planning and funding as part of the process.
Will a new library be provided?
We're obviously in discussions as part over the years. We've been discussions with New York Public Libraries. We're currently assessing their capital needs in the area. There are no current plans for new libraries, but we're working to understand what their needs might be in the surrounding area.
That was my next question. If there were any new libraries, are you assessing the needs of the current libraries in the area? So you are currently doing that?
We're working with, yeah.
Do you have an assessment on when? Do you have that assessment completed?
I don't have for you right now, but we can get back to you.
All right, thank you. Will you be increasing the funding for local precincts and firehouses in the area?
Thank you for the question. So we definitely have heard the need for increased capacity for the precincts, so we're certainly in discussions with the administration and with the agencies, and we will certainly get back to you as part of the process on, you know, how that might be facilitated.
Thank you. In the rezoning area that you have identified, all the areas that flood, what is your plan for addressing these specific areas? And is DEP here? Come on by.
So, I'm happy to kind of start and hand it over to Dylan here. So I'll just note that DEP takes a very multi-pronged approach to dealing with flooding issues. We've certainly heard the concerns and, you know, we've seen the stories over the years about issues in the area. So, an important distinction, we just want to make sure those that might be watching are aware of as well, which is, you know, there's an important distinction between wastewater and stormwater itself. And so for wastewater issues, DEP does ongoing monitoring of the needs there. That would obviously happen into the future with any changes. Generally, the infrastructure for wastewater is in good shape in the area. Stormwater tends to be the issue we hear the most about and concerns with that. And so I'll just note that, you know, in addition to some green infrastructure approaches, DEP also has recently updated the 2022 Unified Stormwater Rule that requires that more stormwater be managed on-site. And just an important point here is, pretty much all of the development within the rezoning area predates that rule, and so we can expect that development in the future would perform better in terms of managing stormwater on-site, and that's something we certainly expect. I'll also just note that, and I'll ask DEP if they wouldn't mind speaking to them so I don't flub it, but there are a number of programs currently ongoing in the area, which include a cloud burst program that's federally funded in the area, study of ongoing needs for flooding in the area. There are a number of rain gardens, for instance, that have been added, stretching all the way from Hunts Point to Co-op City. And also just note, DEP is already looking into providing porous paving as well to help with flooding issues in portions of the rezoning area and around the rezoning area. And so those are just some of the many things that DEP is doing, so I'll hand that off to Dylan.
So just want to swear, Dylan, in first.
Exactly.
Before we do, we've been joined by Councilmember Brea.
Dylan Marr.
Thank you, and could you please raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and in response to council member questions.
I do.
Thank you.
So I guess to expand on that, so regarding the unified, universal stormwater rule, that will manage 1.5 inches of rain on new development that will either disturb ground or also develop new undeveloped areas. So that is a really important factor of, you know, the addressing stormwater management across the city and here too where there will be new development. Michael spoke about the green infrastructure across, across a number of the council districts, all the council districts that this is touching. So there are hundreds of rain gardens and infiltration basins, which are kind of like rain gardens, but under the sidewalk across, across the area that's already there. In the near-term plans, DEP has two major near-term plans for addressing stormwater. One is the porous pavement, which is a little bit more on the western side of some of the council districts, but we'll, we are looking at opportunities at some of the locations that council members have reached out to us about regarding flooding to see if the porous pavement can overlap and help with those areas. And the porous pavement there will help manage typical storms, more like one, up to one-inch storms, but along with that, the porous pavement helps infiltrate stormwater more quickly into the ground. And then there's the, our cloud burst program, which some of you may have heard about. We've spoken with a number of the community boards, and I believe the Morris Park bid, Morris Park Ave bid about it. And this is kind of amplified green infrastructure, so using natural systems to generally not put the water into the storm sewer system, but to keep it out of the storm sewer system, but to manage a larger storm, which is a 10-year storm projected into 2050. And this is very exciting investments. A lot of it's going to include porous, but also investments in some public properties, and that will stretch from kind of the six-train down to the five-train or, anyway, we will be, we're happy to give more details to you about that. And then lastly, there's the Morris Park Flooding Hot Spot investment, which is a little bit more of a midterm, so not in the next couple of years, but within the next five years, we're hoping to make another stormwater investment there where that will connect, kind of amplify the sewer management of stormwater there.
So Dylan, you spoke about rain gardens, and I love them. The issue with them within a lot of our communities is the maintaining of them. Usually when we're calling 311, we have constituents that live in our communities that call 311. It's always a fight between agencies on who that specific rain garden belongs to or who's supposed to clean it. To our knowledge, it's supposed to be DEP.
Yes.
Sometimes DEP says it's DOT, and then we get into that kind of fight. Sometimes it's Parks, depending on the area. So maybe this is a conversation outside of here, but we really want to address that specifically in the Bronx because a lot of those rain gardens have turned to dumping sites. There's a lot of garbage in there, so just want to address that. I know my colleagues will mention that as well.
Yeah, certainly. We'll be happy to follow.
And I'm just going to ask for you guys to remain on the panel because I know my colleagues are going to have questions for you as well. And I see my good friend from DOT here as well, so I'm going to call Anthony Perez on down, and I'm going to call Rick Rodriguez on down to get sworn in.
Could you please raise your right hand and state the name for record? Could you please state your name for the record?
Rick Rodriguez.
Anthony Perez.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and in response to council member questions.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right. So parking, parking, parking. Huge issue with this proposal. Equally concerned about parking, a new station will be created just south of Co-op City, and people will be driving to this station. I'm constantly going to building meetings, I'm going to board meetings, I'm going to events in Co-op City. That is one of the major concerns that is being brought to me. A park in a ride, a park in a ride lot is a very important component to making this successful new station. What steps are being taken to create more parking around the new stations? I guess you could start with DCP?
So thank you for the question. So I think we certainly recognize and have heard the importance for parking. I think the way the proposal stands today, that there are no parking minimums, but we certainly expect private developers to provide parking. I think there are several developers today, and we've even heard testimony at the CPC public hearing from a developer who has publicly stated a commitment to provide parking on-site. We certainly see that trend to continue, and I think several of those developers are here today can speak specifically to their plan to provide parking on their sites.
Well, thank you. But Co-op City won't be having a development site on it, so is there any way, and I guess this question goes to DOT, will you commit to studying at least the number of car trips to the station once it opens and provide an additional needed parking based on this study?
Really, I just want to, want to answer your question. I also just want to say, a pleasure to be in front of you for the first time, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
So, yes, I think the important thing to know is you're going to hear through line through all of our answers here that we're very, very excited to move this forward, and again, a commitment to making this right. There's going to be a lot of complications, and so, sorry, a lot of interlocking pieces that need to be addressed.
Rick, can you just talk closer to the mic? Thank you.
There are a lot of interlocking pieces that need to be addressed, and we want to give you a really comprehensive answer. So, yes, we affirm that we will be taking a look at this and a whole host of amenities that need to be responded to.
Do you have a timeframe for the study?
In front of you today, I don't, but I promise that we will be following up.
Is it correct that DOT operates parking lots for the public known as muni lots?
Very proudly so, yes.
Approximately how many? Between 12 to 24, you think?
I think that's right. I, my memory was something like 13, but that sounds right.
Has DOT ever leased space or partnered with private entities to operate parking?
Not to our knowledge.
Okay. Is MTA in the house? Got one more chair for you.
This is quite the panel, thank you. Could you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Joe Dunne.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in response, in your testimony today and in response to council member questions? Thank you.
Another issue that is very important to me is how our seniors in Co-op City are going to get access to the station. You see, Co-op City is separated into five different sections. This specific station is going to be in section five, which is going to be a challenge for seniors who live in section one, two, three, and four to commute to the station, especially if we are encouraging them not to drive to the station. So, with that being stated, my question is for MTA, will you commit to provide a shuttle service that would bring our seniors from their buildings to the station so that they can actually utilize this station?
So, thank you very much for the question. We have to be here.
I think, there you go.
Good. Thank you for the question and the opportunity to speak before you today. I can't commit to a shuttle service per se, I can commit to the fact that we are in discussions with our bus operations team to identify need and opportunity to increase bus service to that station. They're actively looking at that now so that once revenue service is up, we're only, not even halfway into the completion of the project towards revenue service. So we are studying that now in terms of need as far as local and additional bus service.
So is that a no on the shuttle?
No, it's not a no, it's, we're looking at it.
You're looking into it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So further discussions on it?
Yes.
All right, that's what I like to hear. I guess you just answered the recommendations, you're looking into other studies for bus services within there for seniors, but what then is your recommendation for seniors to access the station?
Our anticipation is that the vast majority of folks using all four of these stations, but certainly in Co-op City too, are folks are going to walk or bike or be dropped off. Certainly not seniors necessarily with the bikes, but, you know, who knows? Folks are more active today.
Have some active seniors.
Exactly. So there is currently under development as part of the project, a kiss-and-ride location for folks to be dropped off, so it is sort of not a park-and-ride.
You said a kiss-and-ride?
That's what they, they call it. Well, not the seniors, but the project team. So it's a drop-off location, a cutout, if you will.
Very awkward name, all right.
But we're also actively working with DOT to identify, especially in Co-op City, the opportunity, in conjunction with that bus development, the opportunity to move or relocate or increase the size of the bus footprint there too, to accommodate more utilization. So all those conversations are ongoing because we're so early on in the project right now.
Thank you so much. And with that being said, I think I'm going to hold off on questions now and pass it over to the birthday girl, our majority leader, Amanda Farias.
Wow.
You could clap for her birthday.
A clap for my birthday. This is probably the only time I get claps on a birthday. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, everyone, for giving me the warm wishes. So I just have a couple comments before I jump into my questions on some of the responses you folks already provided. The Chair, I wanted to highlight on the area where Chair Riley was discussing about the AMI and the affordability. I do want to hone in and just make a comment that there's a difference between the AMIs that we're looking at for, for people on fixed income, the people that really built the foundations of a Co-op City and a Parkchester, and, and those of their children and like them raising their own families in this district. So obviously, we all are looking at different ways to provide housing for a multitude of mixed families and those salaries and incomes that they are provided. But I do want to hone in on, our goal is, yes, to provide housing for, for families and for, and for people in our communities, but also to ensure that those on fixed incomes are not getting pushed out or can, you know, not live with their kids anymore or not necessarily have to go to a nursing home and instead can live within the community. So I do just want to hone in on that. Additionally, I'd love to recommend West Chester Square Library that was defunded in this last budget that is missing a $6 million capital commitment from the administration as a library that you folks can jump right back in and ensure that's close and adjacent that the families that we're providing housing for have access to that library. Additionally, Parkchester Library can always use additional funding. And I did just want to shout out to DEP for their pilot and study that's going on with the porous pavement. We have been circulating it in my district office to get as many people in, in the know that it's happening and that we're looking at alternatives for folks in the area. Lastly, on comments, I'm slightly not appreciative of the MTA being a bit non-committal today about a, either a shuttle bus or anything. We've been in conversations about these stations for several years, years that preceded us, and I understand there's a study coming, but we need, we have a big decision here in terms of a vote. We need some hard-line commitments on ensuring that seniors in Co-op City get some sort of way and accessibility to the station, so I just wanted to state that. Okay, traffic and pedestrian study, safeties are serious concerns that could be exasperated by the station's development if not addressed significantly. Can you please note specific changes? Can you please note specific changes that are being placed and plans for East Tremont Avenue to enhance access to the station and improve safety for all users on the corridor?
Yeah, I'm happy to start this and I'll encourage colleagues at DOT to jump in. So obviously, East Tremont Avenue, we know there are real issues with access, particularly that station in the primary plaza. That'll be right there where East Tremont meets Dogwood, basically. The design for those improvements, you know, that, I believe, will follow, similar for our mapping actions. The important thing is to signal them as a priority, as we always have with East Tremont Avenue. You know, particularly, you know this, but the intersection or the distance between basically Union Port and Purdy Street, you've got a half mile with no pedestrian crossings. You know, we've been in conversations with DOT. We know there are a number of critical improvements to improve access to the MTA's future station, but also just for people that might not even use the station in the future, the north side of East Tremont. We know there are issues with the sidewalks and, you know, we've been there in all different weather conditions and it's, you know, difficult to imagine future with 4,000 to 6,000 people getting on and off the train. Even today, it's challenging, and so it's certainly been a priority. I don't know if DOT would like to add anything to that, but.
Thank you for the question, and again, to reiterate the concern, we have, you know, those concerns as well. I know that we're gonna be doing street reconstructions and updates on sidewalks as well as crosswalks. We don't have designs on those things again, but I also want to say we're gonna be following on to make sure that we're monitoring how pedestrians are moving, not just pedestrians, but vehicular traffic as well, to make sure that things are moving smoothly and safely.
Okay, I appreciate that. I know we've sent a bunch of different intersections and thoughts around lights, stoplights, or different types of ways to reroute traffic. I do want to hone in on, as many people are not necessarily completely fond with bike lanes, but everyone loves to order DoorDash and Uber Eats, so we have people that are using bikes to actually do their job. And so I want to assure that we are including that in our streetscaping and our infrastructure. Echoing the Chair's remarks regarding affordable housing, the median household income for the overlapping Bronx Metro North stops, community districts, is $57,000, a little over $57,000, well under 60% of affordable median income, which is approximately $84,000 for a household of three. How does the administration plan to provide, produce the units that are truly affordable for individuals and families currently living here, and two, to preserve the naturally affordable housing that has enabled many to call our communities home?
Thank you for that question, council members. You know, HPD isn't here today. So some of the details on affordability, we'll certainly take back to them. I will also just say they have a number of different programs that address a different, a range of income types and AMIs, and so those are available for developers to take advantage of. And they also have several programs related to homeownership. I'll just name a couple. So one is Home Fix, which provides loans of up to $150,000 to owners of one to four family homes for critical repairs. And this is anticipated to roll out in fiscal year 2025. And they also have the homeowner advocate program. And in addition, they also have the homeownership help desk. So those are just some of the resources that are available to existing homeowners and tenants in the area, and they're looking to expand some of those programs, obviously, within the study area to create additional resources for homeowners and tenants alike.
I appreciate that response. I, you know, HPD should be here today. As we know, a lot of their programs take anywhere from five, six, eight years to actually be followed through on, while some of the development between my district and Councilmember Mar Marado's district maybe have the capacity to have that length of time. There's a couple also that do not, so, but appreciate that answer. As the theme that my colleagues and I continue to bring up on behalf of our constituents, it is congestion, as big a talk of the town already as it is. We welcome more affordable housing, community space, economic opportunity, and park investments, but we cannot escape the fact that the Metro North will not simply be for our communities but for residents from across Bronx and Westchester. I have mentioned the fact that there are currently underutilized surface parking areas directly adjacent to the Parkchester Van Ness station sites. Are these or any other locations actively being studied for potential public parking in my district? If not, what alternatives does the administration propose for mitigating the significant issues of traffic congestion and parking loss that the FEIS currently calls out? Anyone can take a stab at that.
I will start, and then I will have my colleagues from DOT expand. So thank you for the question. I certainly, I think we've heard consistently throughout the years and through public review, parking is a huge concern. I think, you know, one of the things, you know, that we're, again, we see the private developers as a huge resource to provide additional parking, and I think you'll hear testimony from them today. And then I'll turn it over to DOT to talk more specifically about some of the other things they might do in terms of addressing these, the surface lots that you mentioned and some of the other issues.
As for the lots that you're mentioning, we're taking notes, actually, so we'll make sure we'll follow up with you on those pieces. But I also take your question and talk a lot about congestion, and we feel really, really well-prepared to have our regular toolkit, take a look, as the project takes shape, we'll be able to provide very specific feedback on the mitigations that we would take. But again, there's sort of known the types of things that we would be doing to help move level of service, but also provide optionality for folks, so like we were talking about with bike lanes and bus lanes. So those sorts of things are part of our regular toolkit.
Okay, thank you. And would MTA like to consider using some of their capital to look at park and rides and private lots that I have in my district?
So we've, you know, spoken on this before with regard to that, and the stations themselves do not include parking with inside the scope of the project. But we, that does not preclude us from working with a third-party developer, having conversations about future development of parking, and happy to have a seat at that table.
Great. And then just for DOT also, I know we've walked this literally through rain, sleet, snow, and all types of hot weather already, but I do want to reiterate, considering looking at, the station itself will be built up on a hill, as we know. Looking at different ways to have angled parking or any other options that we have to increase, even if it's just five, 10, 12 spots on that strip would be helpful. Other infrastructure needs are schools, more park space, and more resources for our local precincts and firehouses. Starting with schools, what grade will it provide and how many seats will it provide? And have any of you started engaging with the developers on the rezoning area about building a school? I already know we were stated that SCA has been in conversations.
So thank you for that question. So yes, so there have been some discussions for a school on a large site at 1601 Bronxdale. We're aware of the request, and SCA is evaluating currently the site to determine if the location meets the city's site considerations for a school.
And do you know what's the timeline around getting a response back from SCA? If you ask a principal, it'll be a really long time.
So we are actively working and having conversations with SCA and the developer on figuring out what the requirements are and if it fulfills those requirements. So we're working on that in earnest.
Okay, and then moving on to park space. My community needs more than open space within private developments. My community needs more playgrounds, courts, active spaces. Do you have any plans and an actual budget to provide these as part of this rezoning?
I will let my colleague at the Department of Parks and Recreation respond to.
Okay.
Thank you, council member. So yes, we know that the open spaces in the districts all need some love and are looking forward to having further conversations about those open spaces. We have been, as I mentioned before, part of all the community meetings and have heard a lot from constituents about needs. We've been working on improving the spaces and looking forward to continue those conversations.
The two parks that I have already provided you folks as to look at necessary investments coming in with the thousands of units that are coming into the Parkchester Van Ness area are in high need and have been in high need that precedes me since previous council members. So I urge you folks to continue looking at ways with OMB and down the line to make sure that both of those parks receive the renovations they need. We need to ensure that kids of all ages can be within those parks, that the schools that are getting more students can equip the parks, because some of them are JOPs, and ensuring that they're accessible, both with equipment and with pathways into it. So I really urge you folks to consider those two parks.
And council member, two parks. Loretto was one.
No, that's Taylor Playground and Castle Hill Playground.
Thank you.
Those are in the Parkchester-Castle Hill area. And another major issue is providing our local precincts and firehouses with resources they need to serve our communities. Do you folks have plans and an actual budget to provide any of this as part of the rezoning?
Thank you for that question. Certainly, we're gonna take all this back, and we're having conversations with the precincts and others about like their plans for future capital and expense for personnel.
Okay, so no as of right now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'll wrap there and hand it back to the Chair. I do just want to say, you know, this is, it is not lost on any of us in this process that this is supposed to be an administrative win as well as a council win. If we want to build the units and we want to make investments in the parks and make investments in our communities and directly to our neighbors, this is our opportunity to do so. It might be one of the few opportunities the Bronx has, at least in our tenure as council members and as the mayor, you know, within the city. So I urge all of you to push back on any pushback that you folks get on the investments that are needed, but also that Bronxites deserve for the decades of lack of investment that have happened. Thank you.
Thank you for that, council member, and I think we totally hear you and we are, we're working diligently on making sure the proper level of investment accompanies the proposed land use changes. But thank you for that.
Thank you. Chair Salamaka?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. I wanna, I wanna start by opening up and talking a little bit about parking. I know that I've spoken to my, I spoke to the DOT Commissioner, Commissioner Perez on this, but I just want to get a commitment on the record. You know, I do have issues with parking. I have major construction that's occurring in my district. I also, you know, I have the biggest thoroughfare in the South Bronx, if you want to get to any parts of the city. And so I know that underneath the Bruckner, on Hunts Point and Bruckner Boulevard, even though it's on the construction, when the construction's completed in the past, we've had a municipal parking lot there that was rented, I would say, or leased to a private developer, a private owner. And we had concerns with the way that that private owner was running that parking lot. I just want to get on the record, are we getting a commitment from the city that we're gonna bring that parking lot back to that immediate community?
Council member, just to confirm, the state DOT is building the parking lot as part of their work on the Bruckner, and once it's completed and built out, it will be transferred to the city for operations and it will be used as a municipal lot. That lot will have 113 parking spots, and a quarter of them will be electric vehicle charging.
There were also concerns on Hunts Point, I believe, in that's right where the Metro North Station will be built, that there were some eminent domains, some private property that was basically the state negotiated with the property owner, and those parking lots have, they have disappeared now. Do I, do we have a commitment from the Department of Transportation, DOT, that you will do a study in that immediate area to identify new areas where there can be potentially new street parking?
Thank you for the question, and again, keeping it high level. I think whenever we are doing changes to the streetscape, we're gonna be monitoring how traffic patterns are affecting the, both congestion and pedestrian access. So we'll be taking a look to make sure that things are moving smoothly, not only beforehand, but after the implementation as well.
Again, am I getting a commitment from the Department of Transportation that they will do a study to look for additional street parking in that immediate area?
Yes, DOT can commit to monitor and evaluate and look at additional street parking, look at parking regulations in the neighborhood.
Okay, and also, is this, is this a commitment that DOT is making that they will do at all four stations throughout the borough of the Bronx?
Again, we commit to monitor and evaluate the existing and potential parking regulations around the stations as we do across the Bronx and across the city. As you noted, there are parking regulations that could be outdated truck loading zones. There could be areas that could be regulated for more parking, and we'll take a look at those and again, monitor and evaluate where we can make additional parking.
Okay, and I just want to be clear, this is a long time coming for the borough of the Bronx, Metro North stations. We've spoken about it in past administrations. I believe that the former Bronx Borough President is there. I remember having many conversations with him and him being a big advocate on, you know, making this a reality. So I want to thank the governor, the state, you know, for making this a reality. But as we're getting this new form of transportation, we need to ensure that communities such as ours that are gonna be overburdened with new people coming in, that we are prepared to handle that influx of individuals that are coming in. Now, my question is to city planning. City planning, what's the cost of this rezoning that the city is paying for? Because I know that the developers are not paying for this rezoning. The city is paying for this. What's the total cost?
Thank you for the question, council member. I'm not, I have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure the total cost for the environmental review, but we can get back to you and give you a specific number.
Okay. Do you have an idea what an average regular cost of developer per project?
What I would say is that it's really gonna, for each particular development, it's gonna depend on sort of the size and scale and scope, and so it's gonna vary from project to project. So for one zoning map amendment and another zoning map amendment, the fees may be different based on the scale and scope of the project.
Was there an individual environmental impact study done for each individual site that's going to be rezoned?
Yes, a full environmental impact statement was done for every site that's included within the study area.
And it's been completed?
Yeah, it has been completed. Yes, the FEIS was published on June the 14th.
Okay. You know, my concern with this process, I could say in terms of the city planning part, was that city planning went and presented directly to community boards. You know, proposed what the changes will be, R7, R8, R7-3, whatever that is. But there was no real presentation made to the community board from the specific developer. Can you explain why city planning chose that approach?
So thank you for the question. So I think, you know, this is a city-wide initiative, and so as a lead agency, typically what happens is the Department of City Planning will present the proposal. I will say and note that with the private developers, we've worked with them collaboratively over the years with the proposal on their specific sites, and so that has been done in concert with those private developers, so somewhat in lockstep. But typical process for a citywide initiative is that the department takes the lead on presenting the actual proposal to community boards and elected officials.
I'm particularly concerned with the Brocksdale location. You know, I met with the developer this week, you know, and there's certain buildings that they're proposing, 25 stories. But yet, right across the street, the Parkchester buildings, I think they go up to 18, 19 stories. How does city planning allow, allowing, you know, in terms of kind of killing the character of the neighborhood?
Sure, I'm happy to take this one, council member. So, you know, the 1601 Bronxdale site, I'll just, I know you're aware, just for everyone's benefit, this is a very large and irregular site. You know, it has frontage on Bronxdale Ave there, but the remaining sides of the site are flanked either by the Con Ed facility, the rather large Con Ed facility there, or the rail line there as well. So I just want to note that. You know, that site is doing a number of things that I think are just worth discussing because it gets to some of the concerns, and I know there's a strong feeling about the need for city-owned open spaces versus privately-owned open spaces, but there is a paucity of city-owned land in the area, and so as a sort of, one of the many strategies in addition to our work with our capital agency partners at Parks and others, and I'll just note also the proposed Plaza Morse Park, which would be open space as well there. At 61 Bronxdale, we have a site that has the potential to add two publicly accessible open spaces to the, you know, there would be obviously a restriction that would require that to be publicly accessible. It's laid out within the special district text there, and there are a number of requirements that would need to be met to ensure that those spaces are not only legally publicly accessible, but they appear as public spaces. And so I just want to note that in terms of the, you know, the strategy there, our goal was to provide the opportunity for a development team. was to provide the opportunity for a development team to provide those open spaces. And so there's a bonus mechanism, and that bonus mechanism is what creates some additional potential density on that site. Although I'll just note, this is all obviously hypothetical until anything were to happen. And, you know, we've talked with the development teams over the years, we've certainly heard the concerns about height. We think there's an opportunity for lower heights towards the Bronxdale Avenue edge and for height to step up as it moves towards the back of the site and would be nearer to the Con Ed facility, which is rather large and create something of a buffer there. I think for specific questions about the, you know, potential future design of that site, obviously, that would require a conversation with the development team there, who I think may actually be here today, and they would be able to respond better to some of those questions.
Now, I will, I'll let Councilmember Marado continue with those conversations, but I just want to make it, put on the record that I am concerned with the height of some of the buildings that are being proposed at 1601 Bronxdale. And then my final question, what community benefit are these particular communities in which you are rezoning, such as Parkchester, in terms of Councilmember Mafarias and Councilmember Marados? What true community benefits are you proposing? See, I've been around for some time now. A real community benefit is not, is not, oh, we're going to look into to see if we can upgrade it or provide funding for a park, or no, we're going to see if we can build a new school. No. A real community benefit commitment is, you know what, there's an open space here, these are the plans to build this new green space and this new park. Down the block, you have a school, this school needs a new roof, needs new technology, we're committing to give this school exactly that. So can you explain what true community benefit you are, this city is actually proposing?
Thank you for the question, council member. Duly noted. So we are actively working, we have our capital agencies here, so we're actively working and have been over the years on what you alluded to as community benefits, so on a number of things. And so we're looking forward to having detailed discussions with yourself and the other members of the council on what those final capital investments would be and what those community benefits would look like.
Okay, all right. Well, I want to thank you and I want to put it on the record, I'm really excited that to have you, Philip, and Anthony Perez as, you know, commissioners and the director of DCP in the borough of the Bronx. It's a pleasure working with you gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Marado?
Thank you, Chair Riley. Hi, guys. Now's when the tough questions are going to come. So I know you answered most of them, but we really got to like dig into a lot of these answers. So I'm going to start with DCP. When DCP went public with the Bronx Metro North Study Area Draft Scope of Work in the fall of 2023, the estimate for added housing units was 6,190 units. The estimate for added housing units today is 7,500. Can you please explain how we got to this number and why didn't increase that certification?
Sure. I'll, thank you for the question, council member. So I'll note a couple of things, you know, part of the scoping process is we received public comments during that period. It is our responsible, responsibility as an agency to take those back, to review what we've received. And there are naturally some changes that come out of that, and that could account for some of that. We'd be happy, I'm sure, to meet with you and discuss those in more detail. The other thing I want to note is that as we were moving towards entering the public process, the details of the citywide text amendment, City for Housing Opportunity became clear. And for our environmental review purposes, we felt it was important that our proposal and our environmental work reflect accurately the potential combined changes that would come. And so that is reflective of that. The good news there is that the, the environmental work does account for both of those, including all of the impacts that we've discussed, such as, you know, on different assets in the community and so forth.
Okay. So you, when you were reading your slideshow, you had made mention that you modified the FAR for C44 and C43. What direction did you go in?
Yeah. So the, in what is sub-district B1 over at Morris Park, and, sorry, B1 is the sub-area, sub-district B. There, which is, you know, you have an area that's adjacent to the station at Morris Park, it's sort of buffeted from the surrounding communities by the large medical campuses and health, educational campuses, Montefiore Einstein and Jacoby. And then on the east side, you have, of course, the Hutchinson Metro Center. There, we've modified in the special district text, the residential equivalent to be that of an R8 district. And so that is reflected in the proposal. Apologies, I think I've missed part of your, your first question, council member.
So the FAR was going to increase or decrease with this modification?
Yeah, the FAR increased for the C44.
How much, how many? What's the number?
Yeah, so apologies, I do have it here in front of me. So if you probably don't have the special district text in front of you, but there is a table on what would be page 17 of the associated report for this particular land use action. So the R8 would, apologies, it's actually not there, but it's a 7.2.
And what was it?
Well, the, the R8 FAR wasn't changed. The FAR equivalent was changed, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And with the, with the added density, there are additional concerns about existing infrastructure, open space, city services. What specific changes to the proposal has the administration done to address the increase in density? We're going to break every single piece of that down anyway, so, but with the increase in density, did you make any specific proposal to help with the infrastructure?
So I think that, so it's a great question, and I think, you know, we did a full environmental review. And I think as you see here, we have our agency partners here. So knowing that increased density was coming to the area, we've engaged with our sister agencies on potential capital investments. And I think that's part of what you heard here today, and we'll continue to have those conversations on what the appropriate level of investment for infrastructure and for needs related to open space and other things, co-measurement with the, with the proposal and the increased density.
Okay. So this is just like something on the side, I know that we keep talking about having conversations, having studies. What do the timelines look for these things? Because I want to be able to be comfortable, not the morning of a vote and walking in there and saying, okay, you have not shown me what I needed to see. I want to know, when are these conversations going to start? I mean, once a week? I need to know, when am I going to see the results, not just the conversation?
That's a great question. I don't want to speak on behalf of the agency partners, but who may want to speak more specifically to timelines. But I will just say publicly that we're, we're committed to working with you and the other members of the council on getting the right level of investment that's appropriate to your satisfaction. And I don't know if any agency partners want to speak more specifically on.
Oh, we'll get to them, don't worry.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So on, on the large sites such as 1601 Bronxdale, what does DCP incorporate into the proposal to make sure that it is part of our community rather than exclusive neighborhood that is all on its own? Because I feel like we have two different communities on each side of this development.
Yeah, I'll take this one, council member. I think that's an excellent question. So here, I'll point to 1601 Bronxdale as an example. We were also concerned about a site that would seem closed off from the community. So we have a mapping action, which is actually technically filed by the property owner there, which would extend Pierce Avenue to the, to the western extreme of the site. And then within where that would end, the mapping action itself also contemplates a rather large space to accommodate the future proposed Western Plaza there. That is all defined within the special district text. So for the property owner there to take advantage of the bonus, there are actually quite exhaustive provisions that include everything from seating to things like water fountains and lighting and things like that, they would be required to provide that. And those spaces would have to remain functionally public. The street at some point, you know, some of these details follow, but the idea is that the street would go into the possession of DOT, and so then it would be fully a public street, and the spaces themselves would remain under those restrictive deeds for public access.
Okay. Do you feel that the two buildings on the front side on Bronxdale Avenue, I think they're coming in at 11 stories, do you think that that's a massive change from the two-story buildings across the street?
So definitely, it is a change. I think one of the things that we looked at is that we, for the proposal, is really to strike a balance, looking at, you know, where we could, you know, locate higher densities which are closer to the stations, and then as we moved away from the stations, trying to respond to neighborhood character and lowering some of the density and the heights as part of the proposal. So we do think that, you know, through several years of outreach, et cetera, we do think that the proposal strikes a balance between, you know, neighborhood character, but also creating capacity for new housing and other uses as part of the proposal.
You do realize this is going to be a neighborhood one in itself, and there's going to be no access from the people of Morris Park Avenue, right? You're creating an entire neighborhood in this one development, and what the large buildings in the front of the property is going to deter my constituents from coming in and using the facilities and using...
Well, I think you make a really good point. I think, you know, the devil is in the details and they haven't, like, I think the development team is here, and I think they're open to having discussions about how this site can be designed. But I do think, you know, we think that there's great value in this site. This site also has the potential to create a third connection to the station. As we also mentioned, Michael talked about those publicly accessible open spaces, those would be designed and created to Park standards. And certainly, I think through the Parks Department and design, we can, you know, commit to working with you and constituents to making sure that it's a development, a proposal that meets community satisfaction.
Okay.
And apologies, council member, just to build on that, I just want to note that the site plan shown for that site, which prescribes where those open spaces would need to be, and the text prescribes their size, there's an entry open space that's prescribed as part of that, and that was intentionally placed on the Bronxdale side so that that public space would be visible and accessible from Bronxdale Ave and clearly a part of the larger community.
Yeah, the front, the front building is still massive, and the height needs to come down a little bit on that, but we'll get there. So what tools has your team created to ensure the developers at the site will bring down the existing community's everyday necessities such as open space, schools, and expand the city services?
I'm sorry, could you?
What tools has your team created to ensure developers at the site bring the existing community's everyday necessities such as open space, which we discussed, schools, and expand the city services?
So, and so, thank you for the question. That's a great question. I think we talked about some of the tools that we have put in the special district provisions to create additional open space. I think on the schools conversation, again, we're in active conversations with SCA and the development team at 1601 Bronxdale to seeing if this site would actually meet the criteria for SCA in terms of a school site here.
Okay. I'd like to sit down and be a part of that conversation because I have some concerns about the school in that location.
Absolutely.
Your team, the MTA and the 1601 Bronxdale Development Team, has discussed the possibility of creating a Parkchester Van Ness Station access bridge directly from the site to create greater access for the commuters coming along the north side of the new station. Where do those discussions stand, and how can we confirm that this important connection will be created?
Thank you for the question, council member. So I think better than us to respond to the current status would probably be the development team there. I'll just note that our goal has been on the city side to make sure that there was a public street that got to that back corner for that potential eventuality, which is the, the subject of both our mapping action and our special district test.
Okay. MTA?
Yeah, I, oh, sorry. I don't have anything additional to add to that. I know those conversations are ongoing, but the status of them is...
So whose responsibility is it to create the station there on the Van Ness side?
Well, it would be ours to create the station in conjunction with the third-party developer, but the conversations are not finalized. They're, they're ongoing.
Okay. All right. A major concern my constituents have consistently raised is public safety and security. What does the administration have to increase the capacity of our NYPD and the FDNY partners?
Thank you for the question, council member. We are aware of that request, and we're currently having conversations, and we'll take that back to both the agencies to have further discussion, then we'll get back to you on, on what that might look like in the future.
Okay. So just to, for the record, the 49th precinct has gone up 35% in crime in the last two years, and they are only down to 72 officers currently. And that is nowhere near where they should be. So if we're going to get this whole redesign and development, we need to have the appropriate amount of officers. They're struggling already. Also, as far as a new police station, I know I've had a conversation with Commissioner Perez about East Chester Road where the police station is, the officers park along the street, on the sidewalk, because there's no room for their vehicles to get in and out of the property. I think that there needs to be a complete redesign of the station so that it is safe for the people walking along East Chester Road and in the community when they have to run out, jump out, get in their cars and, and take off. So I need, I need that to be really considered. Now, as far as the MTA, the new stations, what kind of security measures are you going to put in at these stations?
So all of the new stations, all four of them, will have dedicated access points, help points. There are several elements that'll be underneath the purview of the MTA, as well as those that are underneath the purview of NYPD. So managed by Metro North, there will be a video surveillance system, electronic access control system, the elevator management system. All of these stations will be ADA accessible, so there will be vertical circulation elements. All of those elements will be electronically linked to a central station, which will be monitored, remote maintenance and monitoring, and a public address system. Further additionally managed by MTA PD and FDNY will be a fire alarm system and the emergency help point intercom system that I mentioned.
Good, thank you. All right. My favorite, parking mandates. This application proposes to remove parking mandates across the whole rezoning. Give us, given the added density, why does your team feel like this is appropriate? And I'm talking about the parking mandates for the additional housing.
Understood. So understood, parking is a huge issue. We've continued to hear it. I think the proposal put forward doesn't prevent future developments providing parking. I think we've talked about that. I think, you know, what we're looking at is a balance and sort of, you know, creating, you know, choose between, you know, housing and also parking. I think the other piece that I will also just mention that, in, in terms of creating transit-oriented development, we want to encourage people to take public transit. But that being said, we certainly understand the need and value for, for parking and parking strategies. And so we'll continue to work with yourself and DOT and others to find additional tools and strategies to address the parking needs in the area.
We need parking. We are very reliant on our cars. Maybe in the future, we can come up with consideration to the parking mandate, but as of now, we need, we need that for the housing that we currently have. If we start taking away parking and building, even if we build a little bit of additional housing, we still need some kind of parking. Because another thing is, Jacoby, with your development on their, their property, with the zoning changes, more jobs are going to be created, and with the hopes of these jobs, they'll go to local Bronx residents. So the reality of them traveling on this Metro North Line from New Haven or from Penn Station is not really likely. Hopefully, it's going to be the local people within the community, and the only access they really have to this hub is going to be most likely through car or bus. Now, on the proposed site of New York Health and Hospitals, it's zoned a C43, R61 on the current existing parking lot. The community that borders this hospital is already struggling with parking all in and around the community. How do you propose to fix this already congested parking issue? And will H&amp;H supplement the parking that it will absorb with any new construction on the site and create it within the building that they're, they're making?
Thank you for that question related to parking. So our plan in and of itself will not impact Jacoby's parking needs. After several discussions that we've had between DCP and H&amp;H, including a walking tour that we did this winter, we understand the critical operational needs for parking for both employees and for patient parking. So any future plans for development on the site would address the needs of Jacoby, including employee and patient parking, and those plans ultimately would require approval by the H&amp;H Board.
Would you, would you commit to saying that any parking that is absorbed will be duplicated, if possible, maybe three times as many spots within the, the structure?
So I think we're, 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 we're still in, we're still in the early phases, like nothing has been developed on that site. But I, we do, we completely understand the need to maintain that parking on that site and probably produce additional parking for any future developments on that site.
Okay. Okay. Furthermore, your team has responded to our persistent call to address the congestion and parking constraints that will come not only from added density, but also expanded Metro North service. The administration acknowledges that many commuters will drive to the new stations to take advantage of the new express rail station to Penn Station, and yet, no park and road. and ride or no new municipal parking lot is being proposed. What is this rationale?
So I will start it and I, you know, I will turn it over to my colleagues. I think, you know, a couple of things. One, we are leveraging regional transit service and created transit-oriented development. So we recognize certainly the need for parking, but we also wanted to create an environment where we're supporting transit-oriented development in terms of, and we're looking at making improvements to streetscape, access to the stations, those things which we think are critically important.
We have two portions of my district. We have Pelham Gardens, Allerton Avenue that can actually use the Metro North Station, and then we have folks in Throggs Neck that would be more than happy to take advantage of this. If we can do some type of study to create a park and ride or figure something out along those lines, I think that's a big necessity because I think it'll open it up to the entire district. All right. Now, the area in Morris Park, in the Morris Park Station is being proposed, is being currently, is privately owned. And what is the plan for acquiring this land for the plaza?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So the parcel, two parcels, in fact, in question on the south side of Morris Park Ave that are the subject of the associated mapping action. Just a little on process, is the mapping action itself just essentially sets up the authority for future acquisition? We've been in conversations with the property owner together with our partners at EDC and fellow agencies and, you know, at a future point, there would be an acquisition. The vision there is that that space would flow to the larger plaza between East Chester Road and Basset Ave. That does a couple of things that we think are quite important. One of those is just a larger space and we've certainly heard a lot about the need for open space in the area. We also think it would improve and facilitate users getting to and from the station, therefore making it more likely as well that some would choose to commute via train in the future. But importantly also, the Metro North Station, due to the engineering considerations and where it ends, we were concerned about it being hidden behind a future building. And so that's part of the intent. But again, the mapping action before you sets up the authority to pursue those conversations around acquisition and those would come later.
Okay. Is there an alternative if the private property owner does not want to give up the space? And what kind of incentives are you giving this individual as well?
Yeah, it's a very good question. We're hopeful that we'll, you know, come to a mutually agreeable way forward here. We have included incentive in the special district text, so that incentive allows for the property owner there to transfer the development rights that they would have otherwise had on that site. And that's prescribed again within the special district text. So that's the incentive mechanism there. Yeah.
Do you have a percentage or a number for that?
So the, it's a rather small number because the lots are rather small. So it would be essentially the R eight equivalent, the seven point two multiplied by those very small lots there. I don't have it off the top of my head, to be honest, but it's pretty modest.
Can you get me those numbers?
Yes. Yeah.
And will the publicly be included in the final design of this plaza?
I will just note that we're not there yet to even, you know, a more preliminary design. Obviously, we've had some sketches, but I'll defer to my colleagues at the Department of Transportation perhaps to discuss more generically how that typically happens with such spaces.
As part of any capital improvements, infrastructure, we do include presentations to the community boards and elected officials, so that would be treated the same.
Okay. They would definitely like to be a part of that. You know that. Thank you. Can the administration and DEP commit to the study of sewer system capacity and flood control throughout the Morris Park rezoning area, but with special attention to the immediate station area and Basset area?
Thank you, Councilmember. So in Morris Park, we have our flooding hotspot study area that we're planning already. And to the, to the east of that, I believe is the area that you're speaking about, currently, the sewer system drains to a different kind of trunk sewer, which is like the main sewer. And that sewer system is being monitored and modeled to see what the flows are there for that. Currently, the modeling suggests that they're, that it's within capacity. As far as stormwater, your office has sent us a couple of locations. Appreciate that and a couple of pictures. And our commissioner is planning to meet you in the field on Friday. I think we can speak about those specific locations that you've sent us and maybe we can send your team, just to reiterate those locations, just to be sure that we have them correctly and talk about opportunities in those specific locations.
Okay.
And, you know, we have been working with the communities to on the kind of the cloudburst investments to, so we have been engaging them. Although I know that's a slightly different area than what you're asking about.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And what road changes should my community expect to be, to facilitate the plaza and the station access? Like, is there going to be changes? I think you had mentioned de-mapping or mapping.
Yeah, so the...
By the plaza?
Yeah. So the proposed action there is a mapping action. So typically for plaza spaces, we thought it was important that it be under the jurisdiction of DOT in the eventual future. And so the mapping action would essentially extend Morris Park Ave into that sort of triangular lot that would open up the view to the station there.
Okay. Will the plaza be complete before the Metro North Station service begins at Morris Park?
So in terms of the timing around the plaza, I'm not able to give you a timeline, you know, where this is the action that sets us up for that future conversation. So I'll just note that. I don't know what's typical, if there's a typical answer for that. We know the stations are coming soon and we've been focused on doing everything we can to ensure that the neighborhoods are ready for them. But I don't know if DOT would have anything they'd like.
With COVID, has it pushed back the whole project? And when do you guys plan on opening the station?
So with regard to the Metro North Service, I can speak to that. The COVID didn't have any impact on the project or the plans itself. The original anticipated opening was, or start of revenue service was 2027. We're currently evaluating the effectiveness of that first long-term outage that we had negotiated with Amtrak last year. We're in the midst of our second long-term outage with them. So we're going to be re-baselining that schedule based on the effectiveness of those outages. So more to come on that. But twenty, end of 2027 was always the anticipated opening.
Okay. All right. Being that I have you here, so as far as price-wise affair from the Morris Park Van Ness Station, how much would that cost a commuter?
So slightly premature on that. Again, that'll be determined by Metro North once we get to that point of revenue service. But one of the things that we hear all the time is that we need to make sure that this service is, you know, doable for the folks in the area, that it is, it's a fair that they can reasonably, you know, accommodate. So we are looking at things like, or when I say we collectively, the Metro North and MTA are looking at things like City Ticket Now or Atlantic Ticket that's currently enjoyed by Metro North and Long Island Railroad. So there will be an inner-city discount type of fare that's looked at, but it's not been determined yet.
Now, in the future, if you decide to develop along this line, will the prices in the Morris Park, Parkchester, Van Ness, Co-op City stations, would they decrease? Because now that you're adding more lines along the stop?
Well, anything, any fare increase or decrease requires a board action and public input. So all of that would be studied and advanced at that point, but, you know, not at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. In Community Board eleven's recommendation, they pointed to the lack of community centers such as libraries, access, and inadequate community spaces for youth outside of schools and are concerned that the rezoning would elevate these existing issues. How is the administration planning to address the lack of community investment through this proposal?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. Duly noted. So currently, no plans for new libraries or community centers in either Council District thirteen or eighteen. But the study is engaged with NYPL, as I think we mentioned earlier, to understand existing capital needs. Additionally, we've also engaged with DYCD around requests for community centers. It is common for discussion, identification of such facilities to happen as part of conversations between development teams potentially and HPD for projects that seek additional funding in exchange for affordability agreements. So that's a mechanism where we could certainly explore if they entertain an HPD term sheet to locate a community center in one of those developments. Again, the study team has flagged this as a priority for HPD and looks forward to future conversations as concrete development plans develop and emerge for sites throughout the study area.
Okay. For the record, Van Ness lost their library in nineteen ninety-eight and I think now would be a really good time to get that back, especially with the increase of people at Baker and Bronxdale Avenue. The residents of Community Board eleven requested the removal of two sites located, one at the corner of Seminole and Morris Park Avenue, and they had concerns about removing the R six-one on East Chester Road and Stillwell Avenue. Would you consider removing these sites or at least adjusting their height requirements?
So thank you for that question comment. I think you certainly, we want to be responsive. So we certainly, I think, would entertain and consider those changes.
Okay. Because it's very important to them. A specific need that CB eleven highlighted and that the final environmental impact statement confirmed is for additional school capacity, especially at the primary level. How does the administration plan to address this need? And specifically, is your team committed to building a K through eight school as I have advocated for?
So thank you for the question, Councilmember. Obviously, we know that school seat and school needs are critically important. At this particular juncture, as I mentioned before, we're exploring possibility of a school on the sixteen oh one Bronxdale site, but we'll certainly take back your requests and consideration for K through eight and we'll get back to you.
Because if these people are going to live right there, they can't go to one school and have to go to a middle school down the block and then daycare in another location. If we kind of get that all in one facility, that would be really helpful to the district.
Understood.
Thank you. CB eleven also specifically called out the need for STEM schools. How can we ensure that STEM education is integrated into student curriculum here in District thirteen?
So thank you. So that's a great question. So I think one of the things that we do know is that there is a possibility or, not a possibility, there is plans for a STEAM school in Morris Park and those plans will be forthcoming. I think additionally, we certainly can explore additional opportunities to incorporate that into curriculum, potentially in a new school or into existing schools.
Okay. And has the administration identified alternative sites to sixteen oh one Bronxdale in the scenario that the private developer decides not to redevelop?
That's a great question. We're exploring all possibilities for a school site. So yes.
All right. Parks. Hi. All right. One of the main concerns I've had from my constituents in this rezoning impact on our already limited parks and open space. The concern is further heightened by the final environmental impact statement, which finds that the proposed actions would result in adverse significant impact in total passive and active open space in residential study area. How does the administration plan to address this glaring issue?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We're aware of the open space impacts disclosed in the environmental review and are working in collaboration. As I mentioned, we have been part and parcel to the conversations related to the open spaces you discussed at the private site in terms of making those more inviting, larger and connected. We're also looking forward to having further conversations about improvements of existing park sites.
And given there's still little public land for new park, significant upgrades are needed at multiple parks in my district, including Loretto Park, Brady Park, Buffano Park, Pelham Bay Park, Ballfields, and Mulner in Van Ness. Mulner, I think, is right outside of Baker Avenue site. Can you please detail the improvements needed for each of these parks and can you kind of give an estimate cost for these improvements at each of these parks?
Thank you, Councilmember. So I have the list that you just gave me. I will look into it. I know we have further conversations pending about open space impacts and a conversation, I believe, on Friday. So we look forward to having those conversations.
Okay. Without the Van Ness Park, I think it was about thirty-four million for a total upgrade for all of those parks. And will the administration commit to fully funding and performing the needed investments to the parks just discussed?
We're looking forward to having further conversations. At this point, we don't have the investment for those sites, but we're looking forward to having those conversations to see how we can prioritize amongst lots of needs.
Okay. And will the Parks Department actually increase the trash pickup services within each of these parks now that there's an increase of residents?
Thank you again, Councilmember. Our expense impacts are important. Luckily, we did just get second shift staffing restored to help with some of those impacts across the city, but we'll take that back and look at those sites and the impacts.
Okay. All right. DOT, you're up. All right. The final environmental impact statement finds that there should be significant adverse traffic impacts at forty study area intersections during one or more analyzed peak hours. Can you explain how the administration and DOT plan to address these adverse impacts? Anyone?
So thank you for the question. So I think, you know, we've identified those impacts. I think we are working collectively with our partners at DOT for mitigations for all of those. And also, just to point out, and you're aware of this, also improvements at many of those intersections. So those conversations are ongoing and we'll be happy to talk in more detail about like what those will look like as we move through the process.
Okay. One of the projected sites is Baker Avenue near White Plains Road, an intersection and Neighborhood Street that is already dangerous due to the awkward design and one-way traffic. Can you briefly describe DOT's examination when significant projects are proposed in each area?
Sorry, can you repeat the last part of your question?
Can you briefly describe DOT's examination when significant projects are proposed in these areas?
So we work with our communities, our elected officials, our community boards to hear what's going on the ground. We obviously also look at traffic data as it is collected. We take a look at how many vehicles are coming in peak hours, where there are particular areas in congestion. And it's, our streets are almost a living thing. We are constantly improving them as we can. Every single year, we have street improvement projects that take into account improving safety as the neighborhoods change and as they are dynamic. And we'll continue to have that commitment around these stations as well.
Okay. And while the Morris Park Station is welcomed, it is an increased congestion in the streets. It's direct significant repairs. How will the administration plan to redesign and repair East Chester Road, Stillwell Avenue, and Basset Avenue, just to name a few critical stations, eight adjacent streets already in glaring need of repair?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Commissioner Perez just said, we're going to be consistently reevaluating as those treatments are made and those strategies for improvement are made. And we promise that we will be in conversation with both you, the community boards, and the community at large to make sure that we're getting it right.
Okay.
I'll just add that as part of the presentation noted, there are also improvements that are planned on East Chester, on Tremont, on Basset, that'll reconstruct road beds, increase sidewalk space, and other amenities to make it easier to traverse via feet, by car, by scooter, or however.
And I would like to do a walkthrough with you by Baker Avenue in the future at some point, just so you guys can kind of like, I'm sure you've been over there and surveyed the area, but just to really get a good feel as to what's happening.
We'd be happy to do that, Councilmember.
Thank you. All right. The Community Board, Neighborhood Associations, my office, and several other electeds have consistently raised the issue of sewer capacity concerns and flooding in the Morris Park area, especially near the incoming station. Will DEP commit to transparent study of our sewer capacity and flood risk ahead of the station's completion?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. We'll, well, our experts can get back to you on that. We are, we did analysis of the rezoning and the impact of the added dwelling units to the sewer. And for, at least for the sewer, there's capacity under our analysis. And as the development expands and builds out, we will monitor that to see if the flows, where the flows are going in terms of capacity. That will help direct our capital planning. And for stormwater, we're currently making a large amount of investments to the west of that area, I believe, that you're talking about with... of that area, I believe, that you're talking about, with, in the range of, you know, many millions of dollars. And we can speak to some more details on the actual numbers that there for those investments, some of them are going to come online. So, that's going to make an important impact to Morris Park, but towards the east, we're going to have to study the stormwater impacts to that area in an ongoing basis.
How long does your monitoring last?
Well, for the monitoring for the sewer, for the sewers, so that's from the household water, wastewater. The modeling takes into account the current capacity of the sewers and the current population of the area, and then projects forward the number of housing units and to then predict the amount of wastewater coming through the sewers. And then we will, we're expanding the use of in-s sewer sensors to sense the actual levels of the sewer systems. So, that would be, the intent that that would be continuous when they are installed, and that's being rolled out.
So, this will always be monitored?
Yeah, we will continue to monitor it when we get the sensors in there, yes.
And what about for stormwater?
For stormwater, so we have our large investments for the cloudburst area and for the flooding hotspot in Morris Park, and for other areas, there, the street investments will help. And then also, we have a model of the whole city, which includes area of stormwater impacts and flooding impacts that look forward, that look at current conditions and conditions in 2050 and 2080, so that consider the increase in intensity in stormwater. And that's really important for helping direct our further stormwater investments along with 311 complaints that we do continually monitor. And we also have, our staff also monitors kind of social media complaints too, because sometimes people complain on social media, but they don't complain on 311. So, it is, especially for large storms, we do monitor that and map that on a dynamic map that we continue to analyze.
So, has DEP placed aside any capital funds for completing the improvements needed for any kind of repairs with the already existing infrastructure? Because I know at one point, the sewer along East Chester Road was repaired. I mean, that was only 25, 30 years in the making, you know? So, have you guys set aside any other capital?
For the sewer investments, we'll have to get back to you on that with the details. So, you know, if there are specific, if there are specific areas that are of concern to your constituents, and we can, we'll definitely look into that, but I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. For the stormwater, yes, we're making, we have capital commitments, we're in the planning phase for these stormwater investments, along with the over 200 main gardens that are in New York District too. So, you know, we're focusing on that too, expanding that capacity for stormwater.
Okay. And as we've seen over, seen year over year, flooding in the city does not merely impact the 100-year flood plan. How is DEP working in the communities of the East Bronx to ensure that areas inside and outside of the 100-year flood plan are adequately prepared for future storms and inclement weather?
Okay, so for the flood plan, for, that's coastal flooding, I believe that you're speaking about, and then there's also 100-year storms, so I can talk about both of those a little bit. So, for the flood plan, we work closely with our colleagues at DOT, Office of Emergency Management, and other offices to get information out about large coastal storms that come into the city. And so, that's a really important aspect of that. We also are expanding the Bureau of Resilience, which DEP was, took on, and that is working on coastal resilience. So, for more details on that, we can get back to you on the coastal aspect of that in your district. For stormwater, for the 100-year flood, or 100-year storm, rainstorm, that's pretty close to what we modeled in our map. We'd be happy to send you the, it's a public map, and anybody can view it and see the different scenarios going forward, and we'd be very happy to share that with you and your staff to see, you know, where we see flooding. And then the investments that we're making and continue to make are to, you know, address those concerns.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Riley.
Thank you, council member. Just a couple more questions for MTA. The MTA has previously stated that the new stations will come online in 2027. Could you please briefly describe the work that still needed to be done to accomplish 2027 implementation?
Sure, thank you for the question. As I mentioned previously, we're currently evaluating the success of the long-term outage that we had previously negotiated with Amtrak. If you recall, Amtrak is the owner and operator of the right-of-way. This project is being largely built with inside their right-of-way, so we're beholden to Amtrak for access and the ability to do our work. We had negotiated the first long-term outage, which took place last year, and we're in the midst of a second long-term outage. We're presently evaluating the success and efficacy of those two long-term outages to see where we, where things shake out. So, we'll have a better idea how close we are to that 2027 anticipated revenue service date sometime later this year at the result of that evaluation.
For many in our communities, the new access to Manhattan and West Jersey suburbs is exciting, but for many, access means more than simply a new train service. Can your team commit to reduce fares for riders who take service within NYC limits or for those riding residing in the Bronx?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, that's a great question, because obviously, we want folks to use this service, right? We want to make it attractive for them to utilize. So, fares similar to Atlantic Ticket or the City Ticket currently utilized by Long Island Railroad to inner-city locations and to Atlantic Terminal in Brooklyn, for instance, would be contemplated when we get closer to revenue service. Those fares will ultimately be established by Metro North closer to the start of service, but a discounted fare similar to those is in consideration.
Furthermore, can you describe how these new stations will be accessible for riders regarding ADA accessibility components?
Sure. So, all four of these new stations will have ADA accessibility elements. They'll all have elevators and stairs as well, but those stairs will be ADA accessible for someone who does not maybe need an elevator but needs wider ADA capacity for stairs.
Many in Co-op City and through our collective East Bronx communities, and I'm pretty sure you addressed this, but just for the record, have voiced their need for better connections between MTA buses and incoming rail networks. Can you please describe how MTA will facilitate these connections?
Yes, thank you for that question. And as previously discussed, we're currently evaluating and continue to evaluate the ridership needs based on busing. We just recently completed a Bronx overall network bus redesign, but we're going to continue to evaluate as we get closer to revenue service what the anticipated utilization and need will be, and then tweak it accordingly.
Your team has highlighted possible northern access point to the Parkchester Van Ness station directly from 1601 Bronxdale. Can you quickly discuss where those talk stands are and what needs to be done to confirm that the important connections will be facilitated in the future?
Oh, I turned it off. As previously mentioned, I don't personally have the status of those conversations right now. They're between our TOD team and the developer, but they're ongoing, and I can certainly get back to you on that, or the developer may actually have more on that.
Okay. All right. Majority Leader?
Just wanted to ask a follow-up question regarding the potential fare. I know, I heard earlier that there was going to be potentially a public process or a public hearing. Just wanted to verify, in order to have a rule come out for the MTA on any of the fares, does that mean we have to have an entire public hearing process? What does that hearing process look like generally in terms of the state processes? I'm not too familiar and want to make sure at whatever point we need to incorporate our constituencies, we know.
Right, so there would be a public process to change or alter the fare, whether it's up or down. There was a contemplation of potentially moving it down at some point if there was additional stations and more utilization. So, any change in the fares would need to have a public process and a board action. So, we're not there yet, obviously. We haven't even established the initial fare, much less a change, but if we were to do that, then it would be a public process.
Okay, and that typically involves like a public hearing where people can come and testify and recommend a price, or is it something that the agency then proposes first and the board takes action on that recommendation?
Right, it would be a proposal and then commentary on that proposal and feedback on the proposal.
And typically, how long does that take, that we've seen in the past?
I don't know off the top of my head. I have to get back to you on that.
Sorry, let me just skim through really quickly. Actually, I think that was my only additional question, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I don't think we have any more questions for this panel. I really appreciate your time today. I really just want to make sure you guys heard a lot of our concerns about this project, and we'll get back to us with a lot of the details that you weren't able to provide today. And with that being said, this applicant panel is now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who would to testify regarding the Bronx-Metrol North rezoning and the text amendment proposal remotely or in person?
Yes, Chair. So, we actually have Borough President Gibson, who is online, who would like to testify, so we will start with the Borough President, and then we will follow it up by four panels of in-person testimony. And then after that, we will go to the online, to several individuals who have signed up online.
Thank you. For members of the public here to testify, please note that the witnesses will generally be called in panels of three. If you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name, being called and prepare to speak when myself calls you to begin. Please also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group, and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council's website. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant-at-arms has started the clock. Borough President Gibson, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
All right, you may begin.
All right, good afternoon, Chair Kevin Riley. Thank you to you and your colleagues, the members of the zoning and franchises subcommittee. It's good to be back virtually at the City Council and to all of my colleagues who are there. Thank you so much to the administration that just testified. I want to recognize DCP, DEP, DOT, Parks, the Mayor's Office, and the MTA. I am excited that today's hearing is happening, and we are moving forward on what I believe is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that will dramatically increase transit access for the Bronx and the City of New York, as well as parts of our upstate region, providing for the future development, both residential and commercial for many of our East Bronx communities. I want to start my testimony by, of course, recognizing our Chair Kevin Riley, as well as my colleagues in the Bronx delegation, Majority Leader Amanda Farias, Councilmember Rafael Salamanca Jr., Councilmember Kevin Riley, and Councilmember Kristi Marmarado. These four elected officials have been working closely with our office and our team on the Metro North proposal. So, I'm grateful to be here. Also, want to recognize our Chair Dan Garotnick at the Department of City Planning, as well as our commissioners at the City Planning Commission. I am here to express my support for the transformative Metro North expansion project, particularly focusing on the crucial additions planned for our borough through the Penn Station Access Project. This project is not just about transit and transportation equity, but it really represents an incredible and enormous opportunity to expand our communities and drive economic and smart growth. The prospect of linking Co-op City, Hunts Point, Morris Park, and the Parkchester Van Ness communities to regional train services is really monumental. It has never happened before in the history of our borough at such a profound time for us in the history of our borough and the city. Residents and families of these neighborhoods have long been supportive of bringing transit and train access to their communities, and this project will help address transit equity for our East Bronx communities, many of which are transit deserts today. This new rail access will save up to an hour on trips to Penn Station and 75 minutes to Connecticut on the east side, returning valuable time to many of our commuters, fostering community engagement as well as personal well-being. These new stations promise economic vitality with this project projected to generate about 10,000 jobs, 7,500 residential units, including 1,900, which will be permanently affordable, and we hope and anticipate affordable for low-income working families, older adults, and our veterans, as well as home ownership opportunities. I have long advocated every opportunity I get, I'm always talking about opportunities for home ownership for Bronx residents and families, and this project can really be a pipeline and a pathway to prosperity for many of our working-class families. This proposal will also add about 1.2 million square feet of commercial space and nearly 1.3 million square feet of community facility space, underscoring our commitment to inclusive and holistic growth to support our neighborhoods, our residents, families, and our businesses. Current residents must truly, truly gain benefits from this development before we add development and bring on new residents. I stress that this proposal must add value to our valuable communities already. In addition to the new transit access, we know that we intend to accomplish goals around local jobs, local hiring, stimulating the economy, and creating access to MWBE contractors and businesses that truly want access to jobs and programs and contracts. So, now I want to specifically address quickly considerations for some of the broader community impacts on this project. For Morris Park, aligning development with job centers like the Hutchinson Metro Center, the Montefiore Einstein Medical Campus, Mercy University is truly essential. I support strategic growth along many of our key corridors like East Chester Road and Stillwell Avenue, fostering a vibrant business and commercial hub. The one concern I do have in this area is the C43 district by Seminole and Ten Brook Avenue really should be removed as it's not contiguous with the larger study, and it doesn't make sense to rezonate an area without a planned project. I also put this in my recommendations to CPC as well as to the City Council. I'm incredibly supportive of the future Marconi Street to Pelham Parkway connection that I believe will alleviate congestion and traffic from the local streets, which is one of the top concerns that we consistently hear from our civic associations as well as residents and families. This connection is a game changer, and we need to prioritize this as a major capital commitment. For the Parkchester Van Ness, zoning changes along East Tremont Avenue, Bronxdale Avenue, and White Plains Road, we believe will help to spur development that meets our local needs. The future growth of the area through transit-oriented development must be aligned with infrastructure improvements that all of my colleagues have consistently talked about that are vital for accessibility and livability. I will continue working with our Majority Leader Amanda Farias and her team on the added height for the Parkchester Preservation Corporation's parking garages on East Tremont. This conversation is still ongoing, and I want to thank our Majority Leader for engaging with the shareholders and homeowners at Parkchester condominiums that have truly been concerned about height growth and the impact it's going to have on their everyday living. We're listening to people, we're having engagements on the ground, and we want to make sure that everyone's voices are really a part of this conversation. Thank you, Majority Leader and your team. Co-op City, Section 5, the unique challenges there, demand innovative solutions from parking strategies to public-private partnerships. Shuttle service, Councilmember Riley that you talked about is absolutely critical to this work, ensuring that robust bus connections and prioritizing the zero emission transportation for our buses aligns with our commitment to environmental justice. We hear a lot from our Co-op City residents, as well as Chair Riley and his conversations, so we do want to make sure that we are prioritizing some of their needs. When we've had meetings on the ground, folks have been very consistent about what they believe they deserve to take on a Metro North station in the Co-op City community. In Hunts Point, down in the South Bronx, we must prioritize pedestrian safety amid increased traffic, Bruckner Boulevard, the local streets. Bruckner Boulevard, the local streets, service road and the main road. Additionally, investments in electric vehicle infrastructure will really help mitigate air pollution, benefiting the residents of this vibrant yet underserved community. I want to recognize all of our community boards, Community Board Two down in Hunts Point who really was involved in having dialogue on the ground with organizations like The Point, CDC, and many others. We are excited about the opportunities in the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center as well. All of these projects that are happening simultaneously are even adding more value to our neighborhoods as we look to see our new Metro-North stations. Across all station areas, affordable housing is really a cornerstone of our work, development, investments in schools as the Councilmember talked about, 3K, UPK, adding school seats to our local school district, addressing healthcare, public safety, the local precincts that represent these areas. Green spaces, open spaces are absolutely essential to sustaining our residents today as well as our residents and families of tomorrow. The Hunts Point and the Morris Park communities, as many of you know, two of the top ten business hubs in the entire City of New York, while Co-op City and Parkchester Van Ness communities are home to some of the largest planned, community-driven projects that we have today. And we want to ensure that these communities have the infrastructure investments that they need right now that we're already talking about before this project is approved. Because we want to make sure that residents are listening, are hearing us when it comes to some of their needs. What I'm excited about with the Hutch Metro Center, Montefiore Einstein, Mercy, I'm excited about the planned site of our Bronx STEAM School, Science, Technology, Engineering, Architecture, and Math. And you all know I'm adding a second M, which is for music, since we are the birthplace of hip-hop. We want to make sure that we are training our young people with career pathways. We're focusing on healthcare, life sciences, research, and we're really building on our young people's talents and skills and giving them the opportunities that they deserve. The capital investments are going to be critical in this moment and so I'm calling on my delegation and my colleagues to make sure that the communities are not forgotten when it comes to schools, recreation, community centers. We have to make sure that these investments are a part of this conversation. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the five public info sessions that we held in partnership with our Councilmembers, with the Majority Leader, with then-Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez, Chair Kevin Riley, Councilmember Salamanca. One for each station and we did two remote. I thank everyone, hundreds of people that came out to testify, both in person as well as all of our host partners. Thank you to Montefiore Einstein. I want to recognize my predecessor, the thirteenth BP, Ruben Diaz Jr., and his team at Montefiore Einstein, Dr. Philip Oswa, and everyone who has been a part of this conversation because we see this as a mutually beneficial project that will transform our economic hubs, our residential. I want to also thank the Business Improvement Districts because many people have been a part of these conversations from the beginning. And so in conclusion, as I wrap up, I want to say thank you again for the opportunity. I'm recommending approval of this proposal anchored in our shared commitment and aspirations to develop our neighborhoods, support our families, and make sure that the Bronx stays as a global destination for all to live and work and raise our families. Again, it's an important historic moment, let's seize this opportunity. Thank you so much Chair Kevin Riley and to all my Councilmembers. I appreciate the chance to testify this afternoon, thanks so much.
Thank you Ma'am BP. Councilmember Marmarado, do you have any questions? Alright, thank you BP, your excuse.
Thank you, thanks everyone.
The next panel I'm going to call up in person is Ken Fisher, Zachary Bernstein, and Brent Buher. Excuse me if I butchered your name. Alright. To the panel, while you sit up, we're just going to take a two-minute pause so I can use the restroom real quick, thank you. Okay. So the first panel we're going to hear from consists of Brent Buher, Zachary Bernstein, and former Councilmember Ken Fisher. Nice to see you here today. Counsel, can you please, oh wait on, sorry, alright, maybe again.
Good morning.
I was just asking if we should wait for the Majority Leader.
She said we could, she should be right here.
Good morning, my name is Ken Fisher. I represent the owner of eighteen eighty East Tremont Avenue, which is the intersection of East Tremont, Unionport, and White Plains Road. We have, my client acquired the property in two thousand and fifteen. It was a brownfield and the current zoning doesn't really support any development on the site. The site has been remediated, it's cleared, it's ready for construction, assuming that all of the pieces come together, most importantly, this rezoning. Under the prior administration, we participated in some of the planning charrettes and subsequently engaged with the Department of City Planning, particularly the Bronx Office, who we think did a great job. And then more recently with Councilmember Farias, the land use staff and her staff to talk about the potential for the site. One thing that was clear through all of these, and I should mention that we participated in the Councilmember's Community Forum a few months ago and specifically focused on what I'm about to share with you now. This site can be a sense of place for the neighborhood. We have one small request that we've asked for modification. I've given the Sergeant at Arms testimony, we'll submit it for the record, but I think this one graphic tells the whole story. Under the height limit that was established in the proposed zoning, we get basically a solid wall along one side of the property. If we're able to get a modest height increase to two hundred and fifteen feet, then it'll be able to have a better urban design, a better experience for people using the public plaza that we intend to create, and again, advance the sense of place for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Can your team briefly discuss the difference between the development potential under the proposed R8X zoning district versus the alternative R8 district? And what benefits would R8 zoning provide both your team and in your opinion, the wider Parkchester community?
The zoning designations are very similar. The amount of FAR is the same. The principal distinction is that the proposal from City Planning has a hundred and seventy-five-foot height limit, whereas if we were to do an R8X, it would be able to go higher. I think it would actually go as high as two hundred and thirty, but we're not seeking that. So whether it's done technically through a modification of the R8X or a different zoning designation with some type of limitation in the text, I would leave to your distinguished counsel. But effectively, that's the only difference, it's the height limit.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the Majority Leader for a question.
Thank you Chair, thank you folks for being with us here today at the hearing. The existing Parkchester garages provides both everyday utility for many Parkchester residents who rely on it for parking and historical significance, given several unique terracotta sculptures along the facade. If the site were to be redeveloped, what would your plan be for parking? And would you commit to providing parking for the current Parkchester residents?
Councilmember, I think those questions are associated with the Parkchester garage site.
Oh, sorry guys, Pinnacle, hello. Sorry, I'm going in order, number order of pages, sorry about that folks, okay. Oh, Chair, sorry. Yep, many of my community have consistently raised the need for senior housing and affordable homeownership. Is your team willing to explore the potential for either senior housing or homeownership options?
Yes.
Okay, and I know we've stated that before, so I appreciate that. Your team has publicly discussed providing space for a potential community center. I know we spoke about this several times, kind of going back and forth on what would square footage space necessarily need, or is that a leasing space? Is your team committed to that use and to working with my team and the greater Parkchester community to find a proper tenant for the space?
Yes.
You have discussed providing public open space within the development. Can you briefly describe what such open space could look like? And you and your client, are you folks able to collaborate with the Parkchester community to design any public open space that may be created under the proposal?
The testimony I submitted, and we'll submit it again electronically for the record, includes some renderings of what the space could be like. As we envision it, it serves two purposes. One is to welcome people who will be using the train station into the community and activate that block. The other is that we heard at your community forum from many of the residents that they would like some variety in retail and more shopping opportunities to be determined. So as we see it, the plaza provides an area for circulation. It breaks up the bulk of the ensemble of buildings, provides some additional shopping, and again, contributes to the sense of place. I just want to note though, this is uncharted territory for all of us. You all are making a bold commitment to the future of the Parkchester neighborhood. The market is untested and so our ability to actually be able to finance and build something is going to take some amount of effort. We're open to the possibility of homeownership for, as part of the restricted income component. Senior housing is more complicated because of the way the buildings would be established, the funding streams, and other things, but we're absolutely open to meeting with HPD to discuss these things and we're also absolutely committed to providing a community space as you discussed in, you know, in collaboration with your office and the community.
Okay, thank you. We have heard about the high number of jobs that will be created and this rezoning is approved. Do you plan on hiring locally and using union labor for the construction of the development of your site?
I think for us, both of those are to be determined. The ownership of the property are not developers per se. We have been looking for a appropriate development partner. That was inhibited in some ways by the expiration of 421A, the certainty of 485X and when the zoning is adopted, will allow us to go back into the market to find a developer. But we would certainly communicate to our potential development partners the fact that the question has been raised.
And in terms of the potential commercial space, how will those retail commercial rents be determined?
Well, I guess the textbook answer is by the market.
Yeah.
So it'll depend on, you know, what kind of stores, you know. Retail is a very confusing sector right now. I asked one developer client, you know, what are you going to put in the retail? And his answer was anything you can't get on the internet. So, you know, what the needs are in that particular community, I think remains to be seen, but obviously, you know, retail has a lot of options these days and they're not necessarily going to pay above what they think the space will support.
Sure, my only concern is that we already see some vacancy rates within the Parkchester campus that has, you know, with twelve thousand five hundred units and has about forty thousand people. There are some spaces that just can't keep a restaurant, no matter who goes there, or can't have a storefront. So, just want to keep that at top of mind when those determinations are being made, even if the market maybe says something a little different. The final environmental impact statement finds that under the proposed R8X zoning, a small portion of the impact statement finds that under the proposed R8X zoning, a small portion of the existing Parkchester apartment complex would witness significant adverse shadow impacts from your site. Can you speak to the ways your team would commit to mitigating that impact through the building design?
It's not something that we've, we've focused on up until this point, but I'll certainly take it back to the project architect, who unfortunately couldn't be here today. There may be some ways to mitigate that. I think, I'm not sure which way the shadows, whether there would be a significant difference between the shadows at 175 feet and 215 feet. There may be some ways to, to mitigate it, but it's not something we've studied.
Okay, well, love to talk offline about that as we continue on. And my last question. Does your team have an estimated timeline for development? Many folks in the Parkchester community have seen this block and lot vacant for a long time, so any timeline update?
It's not going to be the day after the council approves the, if you do.
Darn.
We're not, you know, we're unfortunately not in a position, other developers in the rezoning area may already have been further advanced with their building permits and construction drawings and the like. We're at the stage where, when the rezoning, if the rezoning is approved, we would ramp up, we're already starting to do it, our search to find an appropriate development partner, finalize the program, have the consultations with you that we discussed, and then move forward with the Department of Buildings process, which, as you know, can be rather lengthy. The only thing I can tell you is, this property has been sitting there since 2015. They've invested a significant amount of money in cleaning up the brownfield condition, and I get a call, I would say probably once a month, now once a week, from the client saying, when is this gonna be approved? They wanna move forward with it. This is not a land banking for them. This is a development site.
Okay, great. That's really great to hear. I mean, since 2015 sounds about right. Folks would agree in the community that they want to see something finally come through. So thank you so much for those responses.
Thank you, Majority Leader. And I would have to agree, Parkchester's like a second home to me, like I always share with the Majority Leader. I was actually just sending a message to a friend, so he could tell his mother that we're actually, you know, figuring out what we're gonna do with that big lot that has been abandoned for so much years. So thank you so much for this. There being no other questions? Okay. Did, all right, you could, did you guys have to present, or?
Yes.
Okay, so you can go ahead. I'll push the button.
Hello?
Yeah.
My name is Brett Buer, representative of Parkchester Preservation Company, the owner of two garage sites at 1990 and 2040 East Tremont, located along the south side of East Tremont Avenue at the north end of the Parkchester neighborhood. Our company has been an owner in Parkchester for over 25 years. The Bronx Metro North rezoning is a positive step towards achieving several longstanding community and citywide goals, and we thank all the elected officials and agency staff that have been involved in this process. Our sites are occupied by two garages and an office building, both of which are very old and, I'd say, obsolete in today's environment. These sites are separately owned from the rest of Parkchester residential buildings, which are owned as individual, by individuals and entities through a condominium form of ownership. An affiliated entity of our company recently opened, Parkchester Gardens, which is a 221-unit, low-income, affordable housing, senior housing development in the Parkchester neighborhood. We appreciate Majority Leader Farias's dedication to the needs of the Parkchester residents and are working with her team and her staff and our condominium boards on the needs within the greater Parkchester community, though we are here today to talk about parking garage sites. Over the last several years, our team is engaged with various community stakeholders, and throughout these conversations, we have heard that there is a need for zoning to unlock greater increases in affordable housing, parking, retail, and neighborhood connectivity and street activation along the Parkchester garage sites. At recent community outreach sessions led by the Majority Leader, we heard generally positive feedback from local residents who viewed a scale model of our development and renderings such as these that we've shown here. Parking was the number one issue that was expressed by the residents. These renderings depict varied architecture and a total height of 260 feet in scale versus 175 that's currently within the zoning text. We believe that this height is needed to accommodate the parking needs of Parkchester, the parking needs that will be generated by the new development and the train station, as well as creating activation along Tremont Avenue and building a meaningful amount of affordable housing. We intend to continue to work with the Majority Leader and her staff on these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'm, thank you, Chair Riley, Majority Leader Farias. I'm Zach Bernstein, partner at Freed Frank. I'm land use counsel to Parkchester Preservation Company, the owner of the garage sites. I join Brett in commending the Majority Leader and her staff for their engagement with the communities surrounding the city's rezoning area. We support the city's proposals with recommendations to take into account the unique configurations and redevelopment needs of these garage sites. The garage sites are very long and relatively shallow. Within the 175-foot height limitation currently proposed, new development would create very long building walls obstructing visual and pedestrian access through this site. The limited envelope would not accommodate the parking sought by the community, together with the full housing potential envisioned by the rezoning. The site plans you see in front of us, prepared by buyer blinder bell architects, thoughtfully mass buildings on these sites that balance a range of goals for the site. On-site parking, including parking for existing residents and expected commuters, transparency and activation along East Tremont Avenue, new pedestrian circulation between the Parkchester community and East Tremont, creating better connectivity to the new Metro North station directly across East Tremont from the site. These programs are accommodated in a building form that has a strong presence on the street while stepping back from the street and the heating plant as the building rises. The proposed modification to the building height and the zoning to achieve these goals has received significant support to date from area stakeholders. The Department of City Planning has been supportive of the site plan shown here today and has confirmed that a change to the height limit would be within scope. We again thank Majority Leader Chair Riley and committee members for your consideration of modifying the city's proposals to achieve the goals outlined today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a few questions, I'm just turning it over to the Majority Leader. Well, just one question. The existing Parkchester garages provides both everyday utility for many Parkchester residents who rely on it for parking historical significance, given several unique terracotta sculptures along the facade. If this site were to be redeveloped, what would be your plan for parking? And would you commit to providing parking for current Parkchester residents?
Yes, I'll edge that. You know, we've spent a lot of time talking with the Parkchester community. We are an owner of condominium units within the Parkchester community and are very aware of the needs, you know, of the residents that rent from us, as well as the residents that own their own units within Parkchester. The current garage has, that's actively used at Parkchester, has 490 licensed spaces. It, right now, is not at full capacity. We have engaged Philip Habib's-
Can you say that number one more time? I'm sorry.
490.
490.
490. It is not at full capacity currently. We have engaged Philip Habib's office to do a study. They, I believe, are, I'm expecting that study back this week, to look at what the engagement is. We, we had done an engagement study just prior to COVID, and so we wanted to update it with real-time, you know, data. Our intent is to build replacement parking at the 1990 location first for the parking that's currently used at 2040. We do intend to create a mechanism that would give priority, preference to Parkchester, current Parkchester residents within that parking garage. And, and ultimately, I appreciate what I heard today, you know, in the prior conversation about the need for parking and the, how to facilitate that. We're working on how we would capitalize this project, 'cause we are developers. We intend to build something here. And, you know, how do you capitalize parking in today's environment, you know, and I think that you need public-private partnerships in, in making that happen in the, in the community.
Do you currently have the, the number that's occupied in parking? You said 490?
That's what I'm, I'm trying to, I, we were, we were at about, I would say, 75, 80% occupancy-
Okay.
-pre-COVID, so I'm just trying to get the updated numbers, and I'm happy to share that when we have, when we have those.
Majority Leader?
And the only thing I would say is the plan that we're presenting creates more parking than would currently exist in, in that location.
Thank you. And, hold on, before I go, does, so you say your plan currently would not interfere because you're not at max, right? But does it affect how much parking you will have with this new project, being that you're not at max at your other parking garage for Parkchester?
No, no, what, what the intent would be is that we'd build our new, new building at 1990, which is closer to the train station. We would build the replacement parking in that before we would ever tear down the active garage that has the 490 spaces. You did have a second component to your question, which was related to the terracotta statues.
Yes.
We, you know, it is a very expensive process to restore and replace the terracotta statues on the buildings. You know, it's, it's greater than a 100, $200,000 number when one of those has to be removed. In the process of demolition, we would remove those, and we would save those like we have with other ones that have been removed by the condominium associations. In this situation, we would own those rather than the condominiums, 'cause they're on our buildings, but we would do the same thing and try and work with the city. You know, the city has reached out, you know, in how we might reuse these to be respectful to the history of Parkchester.
Thank you. Majority Leader?
Thank you. If the rezoning is approved, does your team have an estimate timeline of development? And can you just go over again for the record, the timeline of leaving one garage open to move it to the other building?
So our intent would be that we have, we have two, we have two development parcels. One is currently occupied by an office building and a vacant garage that hasn't been utilized in 20-plus years because of its structural integrity. Our intent would be, and we've already started the process, to create relocation spaces for the existing office uses that are in the, in the, in the garage, and we would intend to do that and make those relocations over the next, you know, 18 months. Our intent would then be to tear down the 1990 location and construct our new building on that, which would include parking and housing and retail. We would do that prior to decommissioning the 2040 site. So the new replacement parking for the 2040 location would be created in the new building, which would then free up the ability to tear down that parking garage and build more parking and housing on that, on that site. We've had conversations with HPD, 'cause we intend to do the first phase of this as 100% affordable building. We have put together a base model on that development. It is our understanding that HPD's gonna be coming out with new term sheets any day now. We will update our models based on the updated term sheets and then reengage with HPD for that component of it. We would appreciate any assistance we could get to engage some of the other stakeholders that were here today on how we might finance the garage portion of, of the development. And we are long-term operators of retail in Parkchester and throughout the country, and will work very hard to bring the appropriate retail to the community that could be supported at this site.
Thank you. And just, just to go over that again, I think there has been some confusion that I think we've all been trying to push back on in the community with the garage itself. So just for layman's terms and to re-clarify, the first phase of development would be in the 100% affordable building that will then have what hopefully is, what is the already-used spots and hopefully additional spots and commercial space. While that development is happening, the parking lot that is currently there is still going to be open for utilization.
Correct.
Right. And then, once that phase is done, that's when that, the-
We would move.
The primary parking garage will know, will then close, because we will have all the spots that were already utilized and hopefully, and then some, and then that garage will be turned into hopefully development, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make that clear for the record, for the residents watching. The parking garage will still exist, and so will the spots. I was pleased to host multiple community engagement sessions last fall and this spring to inform my community about the Bronx Metro North rezoning and this site specifically. One of the major discussion points regarding Parkchester Garage's site remains height. Can you speak about the trade-offs between height and different development scenarios you may be pursuing?
Well, we spent a lot of time analyzing the existing 175 versus what we think brings a more ideal development program to Tremont Avenue. And, and to, in order to incorporate parking, retail, and housing within the existing 175 envelope, you know, the, the max we could do is about 60,000 square feet less, so that's maybe 80, 80 units of affordable housing less, and that would create this massive block where we have complete connectivity along the 765 feet of frontage on Tremont Avenue. The concern that we have under that is it creates what's there currently even higher, right? So, and it creates this block, you know, of wall, 765 feet long, along Tremont Avenue, with zero connectivity. This has always been, you know, we've been in Parkchester for 25 years, you know. This has been a very uninviting area along Tremont Avenue. People don't like walking there at night. It's not a, it's, it's kind of a scary place to be, and that's even with our police force operating, you know, their camera systems right there within, within the block. And so our intent is to create a development that creates connectivity between Parkchester, creates a good access point across Tremont Avenue to access the train station, and creates, you know, I would say, liveliness and engagement on the street through retail offerings and, you know, the connectivity of the housing and the parking. So, you know, we wanna create a site, a safe, secure, engaging environment along that portion of Tremont Avenue. And we think the end result is a good planned quality development there will be good for the residents of Parkchester through increased values of their own investment in their condominium units there.
I appreciate that answer. I think for both of the developments that we are looking at for the Parkchester community, what we don't want, and I think what people are worried about, is the creation of a separation of. And I think if we are not looking at development that's, has open space, that breaks up buildings, that creates pathways, which then creates lighting and creates walkable streets, that's how we end up with a distinctive, like, delegation of who's actually being put into what place. And I definitely don't want that for the community, so I appreciate that context. The final environmental impact statement finds that under the proposed R8X zoning, a small portion of the existing Parkchester apartment complex would witness significant adverse shadow impact. This concern has been raised by several Parkchester residents, as well to my office. Can you speak about ways your team would commit to mitigating that impact, especially in terms of how the building design can respond to the concern?
Well, I think, you know, we have done some shadow studies, and we're happy to share some information based on what we would like to be able to do. I think that, you know, an important aspect of, of the development that we'd like to see is something that creates this step-back approach. And so as the building gets taller, it gets narrower. We believe that, one, that creates better access for light and air. You know, I know there's been, you know, concern about breezes and the flow of air, you know, and we believe that a more open development that creates these openings for air to pass through will create, will allow for more airflow within, within Parkchester and in particular, the north ball field, which is a, is a recreation area that the condominium has there. We believe that that's a more effective way, rather than having this massing that doesn't allow really for air and light to pass through to the, the Parkchester development.
Thank you. How does your team see to weave this development into the fabric of the existing Parkchester community? What benefits would this development bring to those already living there? We can talk about retail, community amenities you're planning to include, or like, the housing and parking being provided?
I think there's a, you know, a number of things. One, we believe that this development will, you know, bring about improvements along Tremont Avenue and make Tremont Avenue this area that we've talked about, 765 feet of, of really, you know, dead zone along Parkchester. We, we've, in renderings that we've shown, we've identified locations for restaurants with outdoor seating that would create areas where people could go- that would create areas where people could go and congregate. We've planned for some community facility space, you know. We're open to adjustments in that depending on what the need is and what we, you know. And I think that's driven partly by the community and what, what the community needs are. So we're open to looking at, at, at potential uses within Parkchester. You know, we've been a long-term landlord for reign, you know. So we've operated, you know, a senior center in Parkchester for years. You know, we just built the senior housing in Parkchester. So we're committed to the greater community. We've also been a financial supporter of the Nork within Parkchester for, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen years now. So, you know, we're committed to giving back to the community and participating in the community, recognizing that this development is separate. It's not part of the condominium association. It will be capitalized and constructed under HPD guidelines and, and we'll have tax credit investors that invest in the development, you know, because that's a requirement of capitalizing that type of a development, so.
Great. And what's your timeline for redeveloping the Parkchester garages? Are there any other approvals you need from the city or from Parkchester Association, north or south?
Well, I think once we have the zoning in place and we know what we, we are prepared to engage our architect to create actual design documents. We have had initial meetings with HPD. Ultimately, it is driven by HPD giving us funding for the development, you know. So we have, we're in a queue, just like everybody else at HPD, trying to get their development, you know, to get its allocation of tax credits, really. And so, but we, we are prepared to invest our money on the design process immediately once we know what we're able to design.
And do you have funding available for this development project already?
We have, we have funding available. We own our land. We've owned it for a long time, so we own our land. We have funding allocated in our budget for this investment to, to pay for pre-development-related costs for it. Ultimately, when we go into the development phase, depending on what that capitalization looks like, you know, we're prepared to either put in our dollars or secure the funding necessity to do that. So I think really the biggest thing is when, when can we get in, you know, HPD's allocation for us to be able to go forward? That's going to be probably the largest constraint to us.
Okay. And either one of you can answer, but can you further explain the connection, if any, between the new development and the existing condo complex? Would there be any effect to the Parkchester condos finances and any existing capital needs?
Well, I think that there's, there, not necessarily a direct impact to their, as a result of these two developments.
Right. Well, that's what I would like explained.
Okay.
I think that the larger.
There is a third, there is a third development parcel that we're not discussing that the condominium owns. The steam generation plant is within this rezoning.
Sure.
And it is a potential development parcel that the condominium owns. So the condominium ultimately, you know, it, the plant's eighty years old. We invest a significant amount of money in maintaining it. It runs, you know, efficiently, but at the end of the day, the boilers are eighty years old, well-maintained. If we had modern boilers, we'd have to replace them forty years ago, probably. But the reality is that at some point in time, and we've done studies at the, you know, through the associations, on how we would upgrade the heating plant for the greater Parkchester community, which serves twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-one apartments, right? And so at, at the time that that happens, it could, you know, the Parkchester community could have the benefit of the value created on that parcel.
Okay, great. I think sometimes there's a bit of confusion. I know we've had a lot of these discussions around this where people feel as if some of the larger capital needs that we have on the general campus of Parkchester are not necessarily being met. And folks can't, they cannot comprehend how we can create new development while still having some of the more complicated capital issues that stakeholders and tenants are living with. And so if you can, I just want to make sure for the record that there's like a distinction between what a new application actually means in terms of your operating expenses or what the, like, the boards are paying into versus however we can help to give that distinction.
There's really no connectivity.
Great.
When these associations were formed in, in the seventies and early eighties, the New York Attorney General approved those offering plans. Units were sold through those offering plans in two different offering plans. And we own, as PPC, we own the unsold units that didn't, that didn't sell. We operate those as rental units within the community. We pay our common charges just like, like everybody else. I'm not, I'm speaking as an owner of condominium units at Parkchester, although I've been on the boards for twenty-five years. I don't think it's appropriate for me to speak for the board here, you know.
Sure.
Because I haven't asked permission for that, but I'll speak as, as, as an owner of units and, and that role. The condominium is always balancing, you know, you know, what they can pay through common charges to do capital improvement work. You know, they spend upwards of twen, close to twenty-something million dollars a year on capital items every year. And that's a reoccurring item. We pay our share of that. We had some meaningful common charge increases a number of years ago because we had embarked on an aggressive capital improvement program, and that continues. We, as sponsor separately within our own units, invest, you know, when we do a renovation with the new LED laws and all the other things that have, you know, we put twenty-eight thousand dollars a unit into upgrading our units with kitchens, baths, and complying with the various regulations within those units. And so we're constantly doing that as well within, within the units that we individually, individually own. That said, there is no connection between these properties, other than the heating plant property. There's no connection between these properties and the associations. There's no legal connection and there's no financial connection. There's no financial obligation for the condominiums to anything here, and the same with us. You know, there is a, there are some agreements between the condominium association and the sponsor as it relates to these parcels, but those are access agreements and things. But they're not, they're not, there's no financial because it's, they serve both, they work in both directions.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. And then the last question I have, just to be sure, will you folks commit to returning back to the community board, the Parkchester Association, the council to inform us on any project updates, engage on final design, community benefits prior to implementation?
Oh, definitely. And we're, you know, active, you know, discussions with.
I know. We talk all the time.
And we will continue that.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for the additional time.
Thank you. No additional questions. This panel is dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next panel I'm going to call is Ruben Diaz Jr., David Konatsky, Leslie Himmel, Moon Hobum, and Nora Martine.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Former Borough President, you may begin.
How are you, Mr. Chairman? Good afternoon, Chairman Riley, Councilwoman, my Councilwoman, Amanda Farias, and Councilmember Marmarado, and of course, all of the members of the, of the committee. My name is Ruben Diaz Jr. I'm a Senior Vice President of Strategic Initiatives for Montefiore Medical Center, and I'm here today in support of the Bronx Metro North Area Study. With nearly eight million patient interactions a year and over thirty-five thousand employees, Montefiore Health System is the largest healthcare network in the Bronx, Westchester, and the Hudson Valley. Moreover, Montefiore continues to be a prominent leader in biomedical research. And as such, we have an opportunity to expand that where it enhances better healthcare and economic opportunities for the neighborhood. We have a prime opportunity to build a, what I call a wellness village, a life sciences and biotech hub that will be a model and example for the nation. To achieve this, we must ask ourselves, how do we create an area that is conducive to attracting the best and brightest to the neighborhood and our campus? Our vision is to have a new hospital environment where technology meets hospitality for our patients and employees. We envision an environment that promotes both health and healing. In addition, through a one billion dollar donation from Dr. Ruth Gottesman, the largest gift made to any medical school in the country, except the other day we heard an announcement from Bloomberg, Einstein Medical School will provide free tuition in perpetuity, which will attract students with, from a diverse set of backgrounds and experiences regardless of socioeconomic status. In turn, it is critical for Montefiore that the public investment in Morris Park be inclusive, thoughtful, and sustainable. This includes improvements to the public realm, the construction of affordable housing, retail and office space, and recreational opportunities for both residents and visitors. This will be a hub, a transit hub in a much-needed public transportation desert. The proposed station will create easy access between Connecticut, Westchester, Manhattan, opening economic opportunities for the region at large with jobs, housing, office space, and economic development for the entire area. We at Montefiore strongly support upzoning the adjacent area to the new Morris Park Metro North Station. These proposed zoning changes are intended to spur growth and services throughout mixed-use development near the new station. In short, the, in short term, Montefiore's proposed new high-acuity hospital pavilion is expected to require an expansion of the existing large-scale facility and development-related land use actions. It has recently come to our attention that the C-Force dash three zoning district proposed by the Morris Park Metro North Station area plan creates an inconsistency with the zoning resolution's definition of large scale. Strategically, we look to provide, we look at the East Campus for the, to provide a, a new high-acuity specialized tower. These facilities will be, will work in concert with, I'm sorry, will work in concert to best capitalize on our partnerships with researchers and practitioners. But we will not stop there. We want to create a pipeline for our Bronx students and residents through a STEAM center, working with the DOE and the Borough President, she mentioned this earlier, with future generations so that tomorrow we can benefit from research facilities and life sciences on our campus. We, in conclusion, we encourage the development of a sustainable community that benefits all Bronx residents. We believe that the Metro North Station plan coupled with our new facilities will achieve this goal. So on behalf of our patients, faculty, medical students, and neighbors who have provided significant input into this project's vision, we encourage you to vote in favor of the Morris Park Metro North Plan, Area Plan, and for that, we thank you. We've, we will submit, or I will submit a more detailed testimony as we have done to the Planning Commission. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them as best I can.
Thank you. Nora Martine?
Good afternoon, Chair Riley and Councilwoman Marmarado. My name is Nora Martins from Acreman LLP, Land Use Council to Baker Development LLC. I'm giving this testimony today in support, on behalf of Arjan Ducci of Baker Development LLC. Baker Development LLC is the owner of several lots assembled into an approximately one-point-seven acre development site within the area of the proposed Bronx Metro North Station Area Study. Our property is in the Van Ness neighborhood on the block bounded by White Plains Road, Baker Avenue, and the railroad tracks, just a five-minute walk from the proposed Parkchester Van Ness Metro North Station. We strongly support City Planning's Bronx Metro North Station proposal. If this proposal is approved, we plan to redevelop our property, the majority of which has been historically vacant, with a mixed-use development that includes new housing, including at least twenty-five to thirty percent permanently affordable under the mandatory inclusionary housing program and potentially homeownership opportunities. We also plan to include local commercial and/or community facility uses, such as a supermarket, along White Plains Road, which, as you know, is a very wide street at a hundred feet wide and has been lacking that kind of local services historically in this area. We will also provide onsite accessory parking, even if it is not ultimately required by the zoning, as well as green open space, both of which we know are important to the surrounding community. While we're still early in the design process, our strategy, consistent with the proposed R six one and R six A zoning districts, is to locate taller portions of the development along White Plains Road with lower, less dense development situated along Baker Avenue and Garfield Street. This would allow for a transition from White Plains Road and the more built-up areas surrounding the new Metro North Station to the lower-density, one-to-three-family homes that make up the Van Ness neighborhood to the North and West. We look forward to continued engagement with Councilwoman Marmarado, local organizations, and city agencies to ensure that our development provides value to and is respectful of the surrounding community. This includes working with the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance as we proceed with our pre-development planning and with DOT to address concerns about traffic patterns, on-street parking, and the current width of Baker Avenue. We believe this initiative holds tremendous potential to provide much-needed services, critically-needed new housing, and economic opportunity within transit-oriented developments such as ours. We respectfully request that you approve the proposed Bronx Metro North Areas Study. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for mispronouncing your last name.
Oh, no problem.
Next, we'll hear from Lisa Himmel. Excuse me, Leslie Himmel, I'm so sorry.
Good afternoon. I am Leslie Himmel, and thank you for having me here. I'm Principal of Himmel and Marangolf Properties. We are owners of a nearly eight-acre site at sixteen oh one Bronx Dale that's located within the city's proposed Metro North rezoning. The site is currently occupied by an active warehouse. I'm here along with my colleagues and team members who have been working on this project since two thousand and nineteen, David Kornofsky of Fried Frank Zoning Council, and Oprah Moon from FX Collaborative. The proposed rezoning represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the Bronx and for the city and for our site. This is an ideal location for the development, given the proximity to a brand-new commuter train station that will deliver a direct connection to Penn Station and the capacity to deliver almost a third of the total potential housing units possible within the rezoning's boundaries. And you've heard today an awful lot about the Metro North Station. When we purchased this property back in two thousand and nineteen, we were in the umbrella rezoning of city planning and were delighted to be a part of such an important infrastructure project, being able to deliver a fast-track train from the Bronx to Penn Station. We now have an opportunity to transform this very old industrial site into potentially twenty-three hundred units of housing, including nearly seven hundred affordable housing units built under the MIH Option Two, as well as a pedestrian connection to the new Metro North Station that will cut people's time to walk to the station from twelve minutes to four minutes or less. One acre of publicly accessible programmed open space and a brand-new public, a public school, as well as a supermarket, branded supermarket for the neighborhood. We also have a ninety-foot-wide new city boulevard. Our firm has been long-term owners of properties and we own things for, you know, over forty years. We want to work with the city and embrace the city, the neighborhood, and the city council to deliver on this desperately needed housing, along with all the other community benefits and amenities I've outlined above, which come at a significant cost. That Metro North pedestrian connection, the creation of the new ninety-foot city boulevard, and the public open spaces are estimated to cost nearly forty million dollars. In order to deliver these community benefits and make the mixed-use development of our site viable, we need the height and density proposed by the city. We'd like to help the city deliver on this once-in-a-generation opportunity. We thank you for your time, attention, consideration, and support.
Thank you. Just going to ask a few questions. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Marmarado. I'm going to start with Baker Avenue. The zoning proposed for your site will allow up to twelve stories. Does your team plan to develop to that height? And how would that fit into a Van Ness neighborhood of largely three-to-four-story residential buildings?
Yeah, so the maximum would be permitted, would be permitted up to twelve stories, although that is the maximum height. The base height, I believe, is only sixty-five feet, so six stories. So that is, you know, a significant setback before you can go up to the twelve stories. Right now, we're still massing a potential development at the site. I believe we will only reach the twelve-story height on White Plains Road. The highest the buildings would be on, on the lower-density streets, which is Baker Avenue and Garfield, adjacent to those residential communities, would be nine stories. So there would be a step down, and we're looking. And we're looking at, you know, after getting feedback from the community and from the councilwoman, how we can further reduce the height and the impact of any height on those communities.
Reducing the height, does that limit the units that you're able to have? And do you know how many units that will limit it to?
Yes, typically. So a significant reduction would not be likely because it would reduce the number of units. But we're looking at how we can set the building back farther or articulate the buildings to make sure the impact is limited. And, as I said in my testimony, really concentrating the bulk of the development on White Plains Road.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving over to Montefary. Morris Park has been advertised throughout this process as a growing life science hub. And you talked about the STEAM center that's coming. Really excited about that. Can you speak to how this rezoning would help Montefary facilitate this growth? And can you speak of how any concrete plans your team has for the future of Montefary and the greater Morris Park neighborhood?
Yeah, let me try the latter before the former. Unlike what you've heard from the other presenters here today and previously, we do not have a concrete actual plan, but we do have a vision. Dr. Oswald has a vision. The vision, number one, is to create a high-acuity surgery tower. High-acuity meaning that when we want people with concentrated surgery, like, specialty, I'm sorry, specialty surgeries, organ transplant, brain surgery, so on and so forth. We also have a vision, he has a vision, to increase under this plan because the high-acuity tower is a different application that we would submit after this application, a smaller one. But under this footprint, we would love to expand and create a one-stop shop with our cancer center. The way that this whole, the Metro North Station would help out is, in a number of ways. It would, it would create an opportunity for us to invite patients from beyond the Bronx, from beyond, you know, the media area. We can expand the region from Connecticut, from Westchester, from Manhattan. Not only patients, we could also have doctors, physicians, come to us and work in our facilities. And then, if you heard my testimony, we had a huge announcement not so long ago. One of our board members, Dr. Ruth Gottesman, donated a billion dollars so that the students at Albert Einstein College of Medicine will have free tuition in perpetuity. That means that we will be inviting people from all over the nation, students, regardless of their socioeconomic status. With that, their families will come and visit. So this would create, this, what this would do is it would provide for us the ability to expand and to expand the pool of patients, physicians, scientists, and students that would come. We would, really, really can become the national paradigm for wellness, for life sciences, and for healthcare. We could be the Silicon Valley to healthcare for this region.
Thank you. In addition to that, with this Metro North Station, has the city made any commitments to Montefary's infrastructure issues or any capital upgrades to Montefary?
Not at this moment. At this moment, we're just hoping that as part of passing this, this application, we can deal with a minor inconsistency that I mentioned earlier. And of course, we're working with the city so that, moving forward, as we put in an application for a smaller portion of the footprint so that we can build our high-acuity tower. But we would welcome the city and the state and the federal government to help with us as well as the overall infrastructure of the area.
Which is very important because there are machines at the facility that could use upgrades. And we really want to make sure we're providing the best facility for our residents. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And over to 1601. What is the total cost of the pedestrian connection to the new Metro North Station?
You can press it. I'm sorry. We estimate the total cost at about $15 million. There are three components to this, just so you understand how it will work. The first is that the platform of the new train station has to be designed to accommodate the footings for the future pedestrian overpass. And we have funded that work already, and it's being designed by the MTA. Then the MTA will build a platform with those footings, the capacity to install those footings included in the base design. And that, we estimate, is about $2.8 million. And then finally, the overpass itself would be constructed at a later date, and that would be the remainder. So that's the way the process would work. And we are engaged with the MTA. I think it was said earlier by the MTA that they weren't sure if we're engaged. We are, in fact, engaged with the MTA.
How many units of housing can 1601 Bronxdale Avenue provide? And what ratio is that of all the potential housing units that enter MN rezoning can deliver?
We believe that the total number of units is somewhere in the vicinity of 2,300. That is about a third of the total number of units that city planning has estimated can be provided under the area-wide rezoning.
1601 Bronxdale is an industrial area now. Would you consider continuing it as industrial use if the heights were cut to 15 stories, equivalent with the proposed zoning for Parkchester? Would the land still make sense for residential mixed-use development?
We would really hope to make this a residential, a badly, badly-needed residential expansion as for, you know, our meetings with CPC and the city administration since 2019. But if it was cut so dramatically, we couldn't afford to do the $40, $50 million of amenities and raise the money to build this, this large project. So we would have no choice.
Councilmember Marmarado?
Sorry, sorry. In the original draft scope of work, DCP proposed an R-61 zoning district for this large site, which is considerably less density than the current proposal, R-7-3 district. Can you please describe both districts briefly and explain why your team and DCP decided on a R-7-3? And why it was warranted?
In this, you are right that in the scope, the R-61 was described as the district. It had a FAR of 3.9. The R-7-3 has a base FAR of 6. The reason for this change is really that in between the initial scoping and being here today, it was decided that the site would have this large, 90-foot-wide boulevard running through it that occupies about 100,000 square feet of lot area. A street does not generate floor area. So by mapping the street, there's a significant loss of floor area. To adjust the amount of floor area to reach what was originally proposed, there was a change in the district designation, which has a higher FAR. And that's the reason for the difference.
And this doesn't adjust height of the building with the change in zoning? It's just an FAR change?
The city planning then went on to develop the R-7-3 rules under the special district. And those height rules, I assume, would have been the same for the R-61. But we never saw them because it didn't get to that point with the R-61.
Okay. And can you please describe, oh no, 1601 currently has operational businesses on-site. What is the plan for those businesses? And do you have expected timeline to start the redevelopment in the rezoning?
So we have a, parts authority has been in the property for quite a while. They have a lease that goes for about, approximately another seven years. They have multiple other locations. And if we are able to help the housing stock by developing on this property, they will have other options in plenty of time. You know, we'll help them find that.
Okay. And when we met in the past, you've showed renderings of buildings up to 25 stories. Can you please explain how these buildings are possible, given the max for an R-7-3 district is 185 feet?
The rezoning does two things. It includes a base height of 185 feet. And then it establishes the ability to increase the height in connection with the provision of the open spaces, the construction of the street, and other elements of the program. So in other words, there's a bonus attached to providing the open space and the street in particular. And with that, you can reach higher heights as shown on the plan that we showed you yesterday.
Okay. And can you explain how your team thinks development of this scale would fit within the existing Van Ness and Morris Park community?
So this development is, from the street perspective, you will see eight 13-story buildings. And we have setbacks after eight 13-stories. And the towers are further stepping back. So from the high-level perspective, it will not look like a 25-story, like a wall look-like buildings.
Would you think an 11-story building is appropriate right at the front of the property?
We-
When across the street is only like a two-story building?
We expect that all the properties along Bronx Avenue will be also upzoned to the 13, 15 stories. And we matched our height to that new development. And also, we also studied across East Tremont Avenue, currently have 18 stories.
Okay. Does your team provide a plan to, for any open space? And if so, what type of open space will it actually have on playgrounds, courts, and places for kids to use?
The zoning requires, as a condition of the bonus I described, that there be five open spaces. I think city planning mentioned two, but there are actually five. The two that were mentioned by city planning are the large spaces at the entrance at Bronxdale Avenue and the large space towards the end of the site, which adjoins the future pedestrian connection. But there are also three other spaces which are more neighborhood-like, small pocket parks. Altogether, there are five. The zoning specifies the standards for the provision of those spaces in terms of seating and planting, et cetera. Now, you have pointed out that there is no provision for play space. And we are looking at that in order to mix play space with the type of passive recreation that the zoning originally contemplated.
Okay. How can neighbors get involved in helping to ensure these vital open spaces fit the needs of our community? Will you have outreach?
I think, similar to the way others have described their long-term plans for sites that aren't immediately available for development, we see a process of engagement along the way with respect to elements such as the open space. So for example, before providing city planning with designs for the open space for purposes of eligibility for the bonus, we would expect to share them with the community to get feedback, to make adjustments, and to engage in a dynamic process.
Is your team committed to building a school on this site? And specifically, is your team committed to building a K-8 school on this site?
The answer to that is yes. We've been meeting with the school construction authority for years already. Originally, I think it was just K-6. They've asked us to, or K-5. They've recently asked us to expand it. And we know desperately that the schools are needed, and we're happy to accommodate that. We think it's a good use and a very important item for the community.
Okay. I'm a mom in the neighborhood, so I've been to plenty of drop-offs at different schools. Would you consider moving the school to the front of the property instead of having it all the way in the back? I know the purpose of the school is for the residents within the buildings, but a lot of outside residents will come. Would you consider putting it in the front of the property?
We can look at it.
Okay. Because it becomes very crazy with cars and parents and buses and drop-offs, so. Many parts of the district are essentially food deserts. Would your team consider finding a large grocery tenant to be a part of this development? And if so, what brands have you actually reached out to already?
Definitely on our radar. We think, we know there's not enough good, good-in-large supermarkets. We haven't reached out to anybody yet because if this is a, you know, a five- or six-year plan, you can't sign a lease today for that. But certainly, you know, some of the larger groups that can do well and service fresh produce and good foods, we will be talking to. Thank you.
And what community benefits could my constituents expect from this development? Are you going to provide any daycare programs, after-school programs within the school? Are you going to help fund these things? I understand green space is important, and I appreciate that. But there are other things that communities need.
I think as we get more involved with the school administration and have the plans approved, we can start talking to the school as to providing some after-school programming.
Okay. A great need in the Bronx is homeownership. Would your team be willing to provide condos or co-ops as a part of your development project? And would you be willing to go as high as 50% homeownership?
I think we would definitely include some homeownership. And I haven't really studied the numbers to be up to comment to that.
Would you also consider placing senior housing on your property?
Not opposed to that. I'm getting up there.
So while we recognize that the development site may not come for many years, if the rezoning is approved, how many, my community deserves to be informed about along the way. How does your team commit to providing updates and engaging the community during this design?
You know, I think that we can look towards the creation of some kind of a group, call it a task force, call it a committee. There are many names that can attach to it. But the idea being to create a structure around that where community members are involved on an ongoing basis as we develop designs, as we develop open space designs and so forth and so on. It's going to be a long road and a long process. But for that reason, I think we need some kind of a structure around that. And it can be done.
Okay. Now, in the beginning, when Councilmember Riley asked you a question, you had mentioned that if you don't go above 15 stories, that you're basically not going to proceed with the project?
I think the scale of the public amenities, the cost of the road, the cost of the attachment for the Metro North Station of $50 million can't be amortized over a very small number of units. And therefore, it becomes economically not viable.
And then what would you do at that point? Sell the property or maintain it?
Well, keep it as a warehouse. You know, it's an old warehouse and that's, it's fine. You know, we think, since this is a generational opportunity, I mean, the city has been so slow in building new train stops that with eight acres, it would really be a shame not to take advantage and to help the future development. So five, ten, twenty, thirty years from now, it looks better.
So you're, you're basically saying that you invested fifty million of your own money in order to help create the train station, the train stop?
Well, we went through that, I thought, before in details. The, the road is very expensive. The train stop platform and attachment is also very expensive.
Aren't these things that the MTA and the city should be funding?
Please go speak to them for us. Yes, thank you.
So these are, this is money that you put forward on your own time?
The MTA has taken the position that we need to fund it, we need to maintain it.
And they thought the same for Morris Park as well?
I don't know the answer for Morris Park.
And the other train stations? You should find out because that would be very helpful. All right. Next, I'd like to speak to you, Nora, if possible. So besides the rezoning, when you had mentioned, what was the height of the front building?
I had, not fully designed yet, but the maximum could be as one hundred twenty-five feet.
So that's about, you said nine?
Twelve stories.
How many?
Twelve stories.
Twelve for the front?
On White Plains, right.
On, on Baker. There were two buildings, right?
Yes, yes, sorry. I'm talking about the White Plains Road building.
Oh, no, I'm talking.
You're asking about the Baker Avenue building? Yes, that would be nine stories.
Nine stories, okay. All right. So besides the rezoning, what other actions does your team still need to pursue to facilitate your proposed development? Would there be any displacement as a part of your plan? I know there were three properties in the front along Baker Avenue that have not been acquired. Do you have plans of still acquiring them?
Yes, so they, I mean, ideally, we would acquire those properties. However, the development could move forward without them.
You can?
Yes. Because the development already is considering separate buildings being developed. We would move forward with the White Plains Road development first as an initial phase, looking to acquire the other properties. But, you know, we don't, we are not intending to push out anybody that wants to remain so we can build around.
Of course. Do you have any plans for replacement for the individuals that are currently renting in the houses that are there? Do you have any like relocation opportunities for them?
Yes, we're happy to discuss that, for sure.
And would you guys consider making that front property homeownership?
Yes, that's something that the owner will investigate and see if that is feasible.
Great, thank you. Parking is, again, one of my concerns at this site, especially given that DCP is proposing no parking minimums. Would parking still be a part of your project?
Yes, absolutely.
And what number are we looking at?
It depends, again, on, you know, how many of the site, whether we have the full block or not and whether the parking is attended or self-parking, but it would likely be around two hundred parking spaces.
Okay. And would you be willing to create a community space for the residents of Van Ness?
Yes, something else that we are looking into with the owner is whether we can make, the way the building is currently designed, we have a lot of open space and we're trying to create some community space in the building that would connect to the open space and that could be offered to the community for use.
Okay, great, thank you. And what about your green spaces for the project?
Yes, so we, because the site is large, we are able to provide a large open space along, you know, the railroad tracks at the rear of the, of the development site. We're looking to have that be a combination of passive and active open space with some children's play equipment.
Sprinklers?
Yes, and some sprinklers.
Okay, good, I like that. All right, thank you. And former Borough President, so I am excited about Montefiore Building in our community.
So am I.
I feel like our hospitals are so stressed out and we really need the infrastructure, especially with the other proposed development coming here within our district. So I look forward to what you guys build. And if I could help in any step of the way, I'd be more than happy to. But again.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. I just, being at the Montefiore Medical Park by the Green Glass Building, I know they are a little overwhelmed with parking. And I know that you'd like to build all along, I think it's the C four-four area. Would you consider incorporating parking within your structure that you build? Or if maybe, because I know there are presently, I think, two lots over there. I don't know if you, if Montefiore owns them or not, but would you, if you're going to build and develop, would you consider incorporating some kind of parking?
So the short answer is yes.
Okay.
The, one of the big lots on East Chester Road is owned by Jacoby. You and I have spoken about this. They, and, and the community is always asking about parking in slot. That, we have a leasing agreement with Jacoby for a ninety-nine year lease. We do not intend to build anything immediately in the immediate future there, so that will remain. But the, what I would also say is that we will, in wherever, whatever piece of property that we own, that where we will build, we want to accommodate the faculty, the patients, when it comes to parking. I don't know about providing parking for the general population.
Well, I'm talking more for like the Jarrett Avenue section, kind of up behind the glass building.
By where Blondell is?
Yes, where the, where you'd like to possibly, the cancer center.
We would like to do, we would like to do the cancer center.
Yes.
So, so the answer is yes.
Good.
And we are looking to put it in writing for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And I know, you know, dealing with patients for a very long time, I know that when people are not feeling well, they just want to get in their car, go home.
Absolutely.
And, you know, come back and make it, their life as easy as possible. So thank you, I appreciate that. All right, thank you, Chair Riley.
Thank you, Councilmember. There be no more questions, this panel is excused.
Thank you.
The next panel I'm going to call up is Charlene Jackson Mendez, Anaya A., and Jack Connors. Doesn't matter. Okay. We will begin with Ms. Charlene Jackson Mendez.
Is, that's good. Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Charlene Jackson Mendez. I'm a homeowner that resides in the Van Ness section of the Bronx. I am here speaking to you as an individual. However, I am very active and devoted to my community. I serve as the Vice President of the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance and I am also a member of SEBKA, the Coalition of East Bronx Community Associations. I am deeply concerned about the Bronx Metro North upzoning because it will entail the addition of seven thousand five hundred new units of housing and more than twenty thousand new residents to our small community with no provision for additional police, schools, or infrastructure. We are daily made unsafe in our communities because of the lack of available police officers. This massive amount of upzoning does not include the thousands of additional units of housing that will accompany the City of Yess Housing Opportunity Program. We are told that there will be no substantial impact on our environment, but this assertion strains the boundaries of credulity. As law-abiding, taxpaying citizens, we are made to suffer because of the ill-advised top-down central planning driven by progressive elites that does not represent the wishes of ordinary, hard-working people that form the backbone of the city. Sadly, the Metropolitan Transit Authority has not been a good neighbor to the people of Van Ness. We suffer daily because of the neglect of MTA's properties in Van Ness. These properties are filthy with graffiti, urine, dog waste, and garbage strewn about. I urge the City Council to please consider the people that you represent first. Stop implementing the agenda of wealthy donors and think about the impact of your policies on the people. Examine the areas of which I speak and perhaps you will develop greater insight and compassion for the many in my community who are filled with trepidation. I am tired of losing wonderful neighbors and as a consequence, the city that I love because of gross mismanagement on the part of our local government. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anaya A.?
Oh, can you hear me okay? Okay, good afternoon. Well, I just wanted to say I'm extremely appalled about what happened here today. I'm not sure exactly what the main agenda was, but a lot of people came unprepared and it seems like it's been really unfortunate that I just sat through like three hours of this. Anyway, my name is Anaya A., let's go back. Finally, I'm going to just speak a little bit of truth because I've been hiding a lot of truth about myself for so long because it's like, who's going to listen to this little black girl, Haitian American from Brooklyn? A lot of times, people like myself are discriminated against. We're immigrants, we're this, we're that, we're bullied. We got a lot of problems that they think we're bringing to the city. But what happens when a little black girl has a dream? Her parents are already successful. Her parents already have millions. They're already hiding money each way because the government is after them. Her grandmother is a multimillionaire Haitian woman that travels the world. Her grandfather is the Colonel of the Haitian Army. They dismantle the army, they dismantle our land, they force us to move to this country for the American dream. Ultimately, for what? For this? Every time you try to step ahead, you can't. So the bottom line is this, right? I've been watching and listening for a long time and trying to be real low-key because my situation is, I can't afford a damn thing in New York. Why is that? Why do I have to hide my money from the government so that you guys can give me affordable housing on a voucher? Why is it that I go back to my parents' property and live pretty nice with all the cars, but because of this rare medical condition that the government and the doctors talk about, I can't have nothing? So let me hide my coins real quick. Let me hide the bag. Because at the end of the day, obviously, the system is made to break us. But there's one thing that people must understand and I want everybody that's in here to look at me, first of all, and see, that I'm not really one of those people that you think, right? I'm wearing a baseball cap, I'm out here just chilling because I'm trying to learn. But bottom line, when you look in this room, how many of us do you see represented here? Furthermore, I look at the press. My background is psychology, public relations, media, communications. But obviously, you took away DEI. You took away affirmative action. You took away our voice so that we can't be in this room. But I applaud you all for sitting here and speaking truth to power, especially you ma'am. I don't even know who you are. God bless you. You ask the right questions and it opens the eyes of people like me. And yes, I'm under the representation of Reverend Al Sharpton, a leader, a force to be reckoned with, but I'm just a Haitian American just trying to make it in this city. Thank you for having this meeting today.
Jack Connors?
Hello, oh, hi. Good afternoon. I'm Jack Connors, Research and Communications Associate at the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, PCAC. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this afternoon. The Penn Access Project will bring reliable regional rail service to many communities in the East Bronx for the first time in a century, allowing hundreds of thousands of working New Yorkers to get to and from work, cultural amenities, and recreation without the expense and inconvenience that comes with car ownership, or the excessive delays that plague our bus system, in part due to the mayor's failure to implement the Streets Plan. As we broaden access to transit in an area that has traditionally been bypassed, we must ensure that those who stand to benefit the most from the project have the opportunity to live near the transit they depend on. This plan is a major step in the right direction towards that goal. By allowing gentle density around the Parkchester, Van Ness, and Morris, uh, sorry. By allowing gentle density around Parkchester, Van Ness, and Morris Park, this plan will produce nearly seventy-five hundred units of housing, including some nineteen hundred permanently affordable units, generating more than ten thousand jobs in the process. Expanding fare fares is also critical so that low-income New Yorkers can afford the fare. We commend Speaker Adams and Mayor Adams for raising the eligibility threshold to one hundred forty-five percent of the federal poverty level in the most recent city budget, but continue to call for expansion to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level and to the commuter railroads, which better reflects the high cost of living in New York City as well as peer cities with similar programs. Expanding commuter rail discounts like City Ticket will also ensure that more people can afford to access faster travel on Metro North. Affordable housing and affordable transit are a recipe for a more equitable New York. On behalf of MTA writers, we urge the Council to implement this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I'd like to ask Ms. Dr. Jackson a question.
Oh, my goodness.
So how long have you been in the community?
Well, actually, I have been in the Parkchester-Van Ness community since nineteen eighty-nine when I moved from the West Coast to New York. And we became homeowners in Van Ness in twenty-ten, so that's fourteen years. So, and that's a total of, oh my goodness, thirty-five years now that I've been in the East Bronx.
Okay, so as long as you've been here, what are the changes that you've seen?
Oh, my goodness. Well, at one point, we worked very hard in Van Ness. We are the little village that could, my beautiful Van Ness. And we are located just north of Parkchester. We were seeing significant improvement for a long time and it was a pleasure. We worked really hard to secure our neighborhood and to make it cleaner and more attractive. We really push for homeownership. That's a big thing in our area. And we also really work hard for our children. So under the leadership of Bernadette Ferrara and others that were founders of the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance, we were able to get our park upgraded and that was a really big deal. But in recent years, we have seen, the neighborhood is really falling apart. I know that you very graciously participated in a cleanup along the MTA wall, which extends on Morris Park Avenue from Fillmore to about Van Buren Street. And you actually, on a freezing January day in honor of Martin Luther King, got out there with us and you, we cleaned up. And this is why unfortunately, I have to say that the MTA hasn't been a good neighbor. And we just have a lot of issues with trusting the MTA because that area is really filthy. And one of the things that we lost, we used to have the Doe Fund, so they would come in and clean along that MTA wall on a regular basis, but we don't have that anymore. And then there has been, we have many, many people that, transient people, that are kind of in our community and don't have ties to the community. And so it's very disturbing as a person that uses the subway on a daily basis. It's, it's just very upsetting to walk through your community, which was once a quiet, lovely neighborhood. And now you see all sorts of people that make you feel unsafe, smoking marijuana on top of you, loud music most nights so that you can't sleep. And we can't get any much police assistance because of their limited number.
Yes. And what kind of community benefits agreement would you like to see come out of this? Such as like a space for the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance to acquire?
Right, well.
Where they can meet every month or provide community events? Would that something be?
What we would like to see, number one, is responsible development. So as you were hearing, the developer, the representative of the developer for White Plains Road speaking, she said, "We will add a twelve-foot building on White Plains Road because that's a busier thoroughfare." But there are no twelve-foot-high buildings on White Plains Road. And what has to be said is, like I said, we are a little village. All of our streets are dead-end streets. So if you put thousands of people there, that, those people press into our tiny little dead-end streets and without additional policing, additional sanitation, how additional infrastructure? My home was built in eighteen ninety-five and that's by no ways unique. You can't tell me that we don't require, you know, upgrades in sanitation and on, on our streets. There's just no way, the water drainage alone. So we would, we would really like responsible development. And then, if you're going to do that, please, please, give us a K-through-eight school because we're very short on that. And then also, the city must, must find a way to provide us with more policing. It is not fair. We just went through the Fourth of July weekend where we could get no help. And it's not fair that you bring thousands of people. You know that that will increase the need for police and firefighters. And to just do that and expect the people of my community that for the most part are hard-working, taxpaying, law-abiding, you have families that have been there like eighty years or so. And to just leave us in that situation with no additional support, that's, that is to me, government malpractice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question for that.
Yes.
So likewise, I actually was born in nineteen eighty-seven, so I was, I lived in the Northeast Bronx for thirty-seven years. I'll be thirty-seven this year. So I've also seen the change within the Bronx. You mentioned the change in sanitation, increased policing. But you also need to recognize that there's a change in population in the Bronx as well. When we bought, my mother bought her house in nineteen ninety-one. We currently still own it. You bought your, your home a little later, but you moved in the district in nineteen eighty-nine. The population at that time was not where it is today.
Yes.
And currently, right now, neighborhoods that historically haven't been able to produce housing should figure out how can we creatively produce housing without disrupting too much of the makeup within the communities? I think when we're having these conversations, a lot of the times, there's no way of negotiating. There's either no, we're not going to, we're not even going to accept this. Because there was another project, well, not necessarily in your area, but in the, in the, in the northeastern Bronx that wasn't as high up and members in that community were still saying that they didn't want the builders to come over there. So I think we have to come together where we could respectfully acknowledge. I have three kids. We still live in the three-family household with my mother, but we would love to move somewhere in the district at that time. And there's other members, peers that I have as well. And I'm pretty sure you have residents on your block, young people that you've seen grow up and now they want to raise families. So I guess my question to you is, how can we, as a Northeast Bronx, moving forward, produce housing without, I guess, historically denying housing for any reason? I know this one is typically, the main issue is height. And it's really high. I'm not going to lie, it's really high and we're trying to negotiate this now. But how can we increase housing in the Northeast Bronx? We want homeownership, but we still need housing. We need senior housing, we need veteran housing. How can we do this in Northeast Bronx when we have communities really pushing back on any form of development?
Well, I think our community is very aware, I think, of the lack of housing. And of course, we want to do our part, but it just has to be done. I would never say no increase in housing, increase in housing. And yes, there is a change in the population from when I first moved into the Northeast Bronx and from even when I moved into Van Ness. But for me, as an effective government, you need to have. you need to have short-term and long-term solutions. I heard a lot about a, a whole wellness area, which was proposed by, um, Ruben Diaz Senior. And I am totally in support of something like that. But there must, must be a commitment to quality education. A part of why our population is changing is because our population is increasingly illiterate. When is somebody gonna say, "What's going on in our schools? Why can't our children read?" If we wanna stabilize our communities, we have to make sure we are creating citizens that are capable of living independently and living well. You know that very few people in our communities even vote. So you have to have a short-term solution and increase housing, but in reasonable ways. It is not our job as taxpayers to make sure that developers profit.
Right.
So.
So I don't believe, um, housing is a short-term, um, goal. I think housing is a long-term goal.
Both.
And I do believe today, we have been advocating for investments in our schools, parks, libraries, uh, police stations, firehouses. Uh, I think the council has been stating that alongside with this project. Um, I, 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 and, and this is a conversation we should have, you know, moving forward. But I think this is for the northeast Bronx. We really need to come together and figure out how we could produce more housing together comprehensively, uh, without, you know, uh, disrupting too much of the makeup. But we also have to understand, it, there is a change. It, this is not earlier where, where a lot of, uh, members in the community did purchase their households. But we don't want to, uh, push anyone out of the community. When you say that you're losing neighbors, we don't want you to lose neighbors. We wanna keep everyone within the community.
Right.
So we do need people to be more critically engaged. And I even appreciate you coming out and testifying here today because it looks like, uh, you're, you're probably the only resident from the northeast Bronx that lives there, that physically came here today. And we really appreciate your testimony.
Chair Riley, I'm sorry, and then I'm gonna be quiet. Um, thank you so much, um, for your professionalism. And I think you make our community very proud in the way that you conduct yourself. And the goal is, is to lift everyone up. So the strengths that our community has, take those strengths and build on that and give those opportunities to more people. I think that's a beautiful thing about, uh, the East Bronx. And we want that wellness center to extend from East Chester Road all the way through to East One Eightieth and into the Bronx Zoo.
So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
May I just add one more thing, please?
Uh, no, we can't.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay. I was gonna talk about the YMCA. It's so beautiful, too.
But thank you. Um, if there's no more questions, this panel is excused. Thank you so much. Uh, next, oh, we do have other residents from here. My, Michael's here. Sorry, Mike. Uh, we have Michael Kias here, uh, Basheek Grimes, and, uh, oh, another resident, Robert Press. Uh, I'm sorry, maybe I missed, Basheek? Yeah, Basheek Grimes, yes, come up. Uh, we'll start with you, Basheek.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for, um, having this meeting here. Thank you to all the council members and ever, all the staff. Um, I'm currently a Department of Education, special education teacher. Um, I toy in the Bronx, so I have.
One second. Mike, I'm gonna need you to remove your camera from the, thank you so much. Sorry, go ahead, Basheek. You can start the clock over.
I have a vested interest in my testimony today on, because I have plenty of students who live inside the areas that's, um, gonna be redeveloped. And I just asked that, um, I know that several council members, um, inquired about the schools. Um, I request that we have at least three to four new schools inside of the rezoned areas. And I also asked that we have a District Seventy-Five School for students with severe, um, moderate severe disabilities. And also, um, mental health centers to help some of the, um, new residents in case they may need mental health services. And I know that it was mentioned that out of the four stations, all of them will be, um, accessible to people with disabilities. I asked that, um, the housing also, out of the seventy-five hundred units, some of them be allocated, um, and made for people with disabilities and mobility issues. And I also, um, asked that some of the housing also be allocated towards teachers so that they have a, um, easier time educating the population. I know teaching how, teacher housing isn't, um, uh, prevalent issue in a lot of, um, state legislators. But I suggest that we start allocating housing towards our teachers so that they can have an easier time to teach the students in the community. And also, I asked that there be at least four STEM centers or STEAM centers developed as well, um, so that the youth can have access to science, technology, engineering, and mathematics training so that they can be better equipped to proceed in the future. And being that these areas are gonna be, um, rezoned and it's gonna have a higher density if approved, I asked that those who profit also help the community long-term education options as well.
Thank you, Basheek. Michael?
Hi, my name is Michael Cass, and I'm a resident in Morris Park. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Three weeks ago, I learned that a good friend of mine moved away from Morris Park and out of the Bronx because they couldn't find their own place. They weren't eager to leave the neighborhood they grew up in, but this is a choice they were forced to make because of a lack of options. And it is the consequence of ill-conceived planning choices made twenty years ago when we were still kids, which cut down on new housing options in the East Bronx. But today, with the Bronx Metro North Neighborhood Plan and with the City of Yes, we have a chance to make the right choice so that in the next twenty years, when my kids look for their own place, they can stay in the neighborhood they grew up in. After six years of public engagement, the Bronx Metro North Neighborhood Plan already represents a thoughtful compromise, and the estimated seventy-five hundred homes must be our floor. The Bronx Metro North Project is a multi-billion-dollar transportation investment in our community. And any modification which reduces the overall density of the plan could squander a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Morris Park is a major and growing jobs center, but the neighborhood is already out of reach for people who work there today. During Speaker Adams' Twenty Twenty-Four State of the City program, we saw the story of Dr. Luis Aguilar, a third-year Jacoby resident who has to commute home to Queens after twelve-hour shifts because he couldn't find housing in our community. Councilmember Marmarado frequently reminds us that she bought her home in Morris Park because of the Metro North. So I urge Marmarado not to shut the door behind her, but rather to open the door for the thousands of families who deserve the same opportunity to live in our community and use the station. I urge the City Council to pass this plan without any height or density reductions. And with all of its provisions, including the elimination of the residential parking mandate, we can make the investments to make it work. Thank you.
Robert?
Yes, uh, I moved here, I moved to Morris Park five years ago.
Uh, Robert, you had to push the button.
Okay. I moved here to Morris Park five years ago from Riverdale. And in two thousand and eighteen, when public scoping meetings were called by Metro North, the public was asked what we'd like to see at the new stations. It was all four at first, at the meetings, then it went into individual stations. We were told a plaza would be built at each, each station and asked what we wanted. We wanted a quality restaurant like a Denny's, not a fast-food restaurant. We wanted other quality stores and even a Haagen-Dazs ice cream store. We said we would like to see some parking and a bus stop to drop off passengers at the stations. There was no mention of any housing. Housing came into the picture when Eric Adams became mayor in two thousand and twenty-two. First, there were six thousand units, which people thought would be divided between the four stations. Then it was only at the Morris Park and Van Ness Parkchester stations. Then with the City of Yes housing component, it became seventy-five hundred units, of which seven thousand one hundred units will be in Bronx Community Board Eleven or the Forty-Ninth Precinct. At last week's crime stats, while Mayor Adams said overall crime was down for six months in a row, as a reporter, I was able to bring out the crime stats for the Forty-Ninth Precinct, which I said were up thirty-five percent the past two years and did not go down in any one of the seven major categories, which was echoed by Chief Lepitry when asked by the mayor. I told the mayor that with other new construction, over nine thousand units of new housing, bringing over twenty thousand new people is too much for Community Board Eleven and the Forty-Ninth Precinct to absorb, as I'm telling you today. As I said, I lived in Riverdale on the west side by the Hudson Line of the Metro North, and I lived about the same distance from where I now live to this proposed new Morris Park Station. But in Riverdale, I could park my car by the station for free or take a jitney bus to it, uh, which, none of which are proposed for any east-side station. That means that the Metro North, while it is nice, it is no use to me or many of my other residents in my area because we can't get to it. If I lived in Woodlawn, the Morris Park Station would be of use because the BX Thirty-four bus that starts in Woodlawn travels right to the station. Uh, I hope you reduce this rezoning, which is too large. Uh, and Community Board Eleven, uh, was not told exactly what was happening. City Planning needs to return to Community Board Eleven to inform the community of exactly what this rezoning is.
Thank you, Councilmember Marmarado. Has questions?
I would like to thank you for putting the D-seventy-five school on my radar. I will definitely actually advocate and fight for that because there will be a need with the increase of people coming to the community. You know, we're talking about regular schools, K-through-eight, but we also have a demographic of students that are gonna need, uh, special education. So thank you for that. And, um, Mr. Press, I just wanted to ask you, when you took the jitney from Riverdale to the Metro North Station, who paid for that?
I didn't take the jitney. I was able.
But there, there was a jitney, is what I'm saying. But who, who operates and pays for it? Is it privately run or is it through the city?
I couldn't tell you because I didn't use it. I, it was, uh, I believe part of the fare to the Metro North. I couldn't tell you. Like I said, I found parking right by the station anytime I needed it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Marmarado. Uh, there being no questions, this panel is excused. Thank you for coming and testifying today. Uh, the first online panel that we're gonna call is Bernadette Ferrera, Brandon Mohammed, and Kathy Sebeck. Once again, the first online panel we are calling is Bernadette Ferrer, Bernadette Ferrera, Brandon Mohammed, and Kathy Sebeck. We will start first with Bernadette Ferrera.
You may begin.
Ms. Ferrera, if you could hear me, please unmute. Yes.
Sorry about that. I've been unmuted for so long.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Committee Chair Riley and councilmembers of this public hearing. My name is Bernadette Ferrara. I'm the president of the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance, a member of SEPCA, and a lifelong East Bronx resident living in Van, the neighborhood of Van Ness for over six decades. One of the oldest neighborhoods in the East Bronx dating back to eighteen ninety-three, when the Morris Park racetrack began in eighteen eighty-nine. I wanted to thank also my colleague, Charlene Jackson, who is the Vice President of Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance, for actually being very, very specific about many of the issues that were and currently we are dealing with. Thank you. Everyone is in agreement that the connectivity of the four train stations will bring economic growth and jobs. And I state for the record, we are not against housing. We are, we are in need of affordable housing. Both communities of Van Ness and Morris Park desire growth by need, but upgrades in the infrastructure must be provider, provided and sustainable before any housing development occurs. To, in a, to, in a few short years, I am here today to speak on behalf of protecting my communities of Van Ness and Morris Park. I've attached to this testimony the Van Ness Neighborhood Alliance document that was submitted to City, uh, Planning, the Bronx Borough President, and Councilmember Marmarado. I am begging the City Council members to please read it and take special note of the DEIS visuals that show the existing streets and then the proposed developments. If this is what your neighborhood, if this was your neighborhood and this.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
You could, you could wrap it up, Ms. Ferrera.
Okay. Um, I do have this in written testimony. And the one thing I would just like to note is that one of the things that was taken from Van Ness that we would like to add back is a post office. We do not have a post office. It was taken in two thousand and eleven. Um, and I will put all this in my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. You can submit your testimony. Uh, the next, uh, person that we're going to call is Brandon Mohammed. Brandon, if you could hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Hi, hello. Um, thank you for the time. First off, I wanna thank everyone, uh, that's involved over here, especially local council, uh, men and women. Councilman, Councilwoman Mortomoto, Councilman Salamanca, of course, Councilman Riley, and of course, my local councilwoman and Majority Leader Farias. Uh, due to the lack of time, I'll just do a brief intro. My name's Brandon Mohammed. I'm a managing director of a locally-based nonprofit, Alia LTD. Uh, and I'm also a principal of MBAS Inc. I'm a local resident in northeast Bronx, specifically on Gleason Avenue for thirty-plus years. I still live, uh, close by on the corner of the mosque and the church. That's for all you locals. Let's speak about a few points. Councilman Mortomoto, uh, made a number of valid points about quality of life standard issues with the design. Um, I'm a dissenter for the design, for the plan, but only minimal dissent. Uh, I assume it's probably gonna go through, so, you know, I don't wanna say too much bad about it. And I'm of, I would consider myself a Yimby, and our nonprofit is also, uh, specifically not Nimbys. Um, I also, uh, support, uh, Councilman Mortomoto's point about segmentation of, of her representative neighborhoods. But I'm here to talk about that libraries and parks are wonderful, but the Bronx also has well-intentioned ideas for these institutions, but a lack of quality and follow-through. I wanted to mention the value of third spaces and define creativity and concessions for business owners, operators of set spaces. Less franchise restaurants for the development sites, more stable locally-owned businesses that hire locally. Retail should be subsidized to allow, retail leases, I mean, should be subsidized to allow for maintaining commercial unit, uh, unit frontage um, and potentially facilitating for the additional creation of bids and, uh.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Okay.
You, you could.
Ten seconds to wrap up?
Yes, you can wrap up.
Okay, thank you. So, um, yeah, nuance in business tenant policy. Infrastructure improvements are a must. Local job consideration for industrial business owners are legal. Councilman Salamanca, building height issues, and Farias mentioned building height issues, diminish quality of life standards, uh, building amenities being created without privately-owned public spaces, lack of qualitative outreach for the DCP events, further substantiated by minimal diversity of thought and design, and more thoughtful local and MWBE, uh, standards for hiring with transparency, similar to the success in the JFK redevelopment project. And finally, one of the local constituents had mentioned that literacy and educational standards and vocational educational standards, that's also a must for our communities. We need people to be trained for these jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Sebeck.
You may begin.
Hello, good afternoon, good afternoon, Chair and so, and councilmembers. Um, I was gonna talk about infrastructure, flooding, and all that, but you all addressed that quite nicely and represented your constituents well. Um, I urge you not to say yes, so you get concrete commitments on that. But what I really wanted to note, I live on City Island. There's people in Palan Bay. We would like to use the Metro North Station. And there's an area that I wanted to point out that I did numerous times at MTA meetings, and most meetings, they said, um, that will come later, parking. And all the council people seemed interested in having parking. There's an area that, um, it's a ramp that went into Co-op City that went to the hutch that they closed. Alongside that was a road that went to a old horse stable that was there decades ago. And I guess it was run by the Parks Department, and they must have leased it to the horse stable. That might be an area that you can make some sort of deal with New York City Park to make that area park, parking because people from City Island love to use the Metro North, people from Palan Bay, and some of the people in that area, um, I don't know what it's called, Palan Gardens over there, and a place to park, because we do drive here in the northeast. in the Northeast. So I just wanted to let you know about that area, and maybe you can investigate it with Parks, and maybe you could have a private city enterprise with parking there. Thank you for the opportunity, but please include us. Don't forget about us in your MTA plan. We'd like to use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any questions for this panel? All right, this panel is excused. The next panel I'm going to call up consists of Austin Celestine, Diana Finch, Jim Wright, and Kevin Deloya. First, I'm going to call up Austin Celestine to begin.
You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Austin Celestine. I am a graduate urban planning student at NYU Wagner. I'm also a member of Open New York. This plan embodies transit-oriented development, which is probably the three favorite words of everyone in the urban planning sphere. It embodies what green development looks like and climate-conscious development looks like. It'll be the arrival of the Metro North Stations in an area of the Bronx that's a huge transit desert is a gigantic opportunity for economic and residential development, and 7,500 units of housing is something that should be encouraged, and as Michael said before me, should be the floor. I would caution against concerns for parking. Obviously, it must be acknowledged that this part of the Bronx, the Southeast Bronx and the East Bronx in general, has higher car ownership rates than the rest of the city at large, but research does indicate that splurging on parking and adding more lanes time and time again does not help to accommodate for increased congestion. In fact, it causes the exact opposite. It can worsen congestion and worsen parking issues. It encourages people to drive through induced demand. And the parking mandates that we're trying to get rid of in City of Yes is also found to make housing more expensive, which would undermine the very valid concerns about affordability rates. What is a valid concern is that there's not great bus connections to the Metro North Stations, so calls for a commitment to a Hudson-Railway-type solution like in Riverdale or shuttles to the Metro North Stations from various areas in the Bronx is very necessary, along with calls for increased bus service or new bus routes. I know the redesign is just over two years old, but it doesn't help to just revisit that and introduce new bus service. But this serves not just the model of what we can do at more Metro North Stations in the region, but also things that we can expand to the state level as well. Governor Hochul last year advocated for transit-oriented development, and this is a good practice of that, building around new Metro North Stations, building around transit is something that we should be doing--
Your time is expired. Thank you.
Yes, just vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Kevin Deloya. Kevin, you may begin.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, thanks. Hey, my name is Kevin Deloya. I live in the East Bronx, Community Board 10. I'm in Community Board 11 all the time. I consider it the East Bronx. There's not much more that I can say today that hasn't been said by either, however anybody feels about the project itself. Some of the negative stuff we've heard and some of the positive stuff we've heard, they fall into the same category as each other. It just depends on how you read it. At the end of the day, I am for the project and want to state that I am for the Metro North Stations being built. I am for the additional housing that it would bring and the businesses that it would bring and the, you know, infrastructure, meaning what would happen in front of the local areas. Although I would like to see, you know, things like anybody else that saw here, you know, the loading areas to have a drop-off so cars can keep moving, you know, maybe some street furniture to make it look aesthetic and some, you know, open space in the areas. So it's not much more that I can add than the Borough President did and that the former Borough President did, as well as the nice notes on both sides. I don't think that we should focus the housing issue and/or the MTA's drop-off areas to lack of parking. Parking would be a private issue, not something that the city and/or the MTA would deal with. And one last note, when the MTA first started having their public hearings, which I've been a part of for the last six or seven years, drawing bike lanes on their maps, it was really about the MTA and 100 feet within the train track zone. And it wasn't for a year or so when the City Planning had their hearings, that word of, you know, what else these stations may need and/or include, which would be the housing they're building around--
Your time is expired. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks. You really ought to give people a little bit of a warning, maybe 10 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, Diana Finch.
You may begin.
Hi, my name's Diana Finch. I'm a resident of Community Board 11 for over 30 years and a board member of my local neighborhood association in the northwest quadrant of the district. I'm in favor of the Metro North rezoning because it can bring much-needed affordable housing to the area and will revitalize underused areas, the largest and most significant being East Tremont from White Plains Road to Castle Hill Avenue. I was introduced to this stretch of a major East Bronx thoroughfare in spring 2019 when my newly-elected congressperson, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, organized an earthdate cleanup along East Tremont. For hours, we walked this deserted and extremely pedestrian, unfriendly roadway, filling bags and bags of trash, everything from disintegrated bits of plastic to heavy abandoned car parts. To see it reimagined as a thriving commercial and residential transportation nexus is wonderful. I'm glad my community board voted in favor. However, they only did so with conditions, ones I hope the council pays close attention to. I wish the board had appreciated that instead of demanding to cap everything at R6 out of dislike of tall buildings, it's best to designate some large lots as R7 or R8 because the greater height requires setbacks, amenities, public space, green space, even parks, particularly at East Tremont and Bronxdale, where currently there are none. I do agree with the boards and residents' concerns about two spots where new taller buildings might too closely impinge on single and two-family homes and narrow streets. At the east end, at Tanbrook and Seminole and Morris Park; at the west, the C8 and R6 development by Baker Street, both mentioned by Councilmember Marmarado. Overall, I'm very much in favor and thank the Subcommittee for the opportunity to speak on this much-needed revitalizing plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Jim Wright.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Wright, a transportation architect and urban designer, speaking on behalf of the American Institute of Architects, New York. AIA New York strongly supports the goals and provisions of the zoning proposal, which links local, city, and regional land use and mobility goals through transit-oriented development. Defined grain zoning changes will create opportunities for higher-density mixed-use residential, commercial, and retail development at Parkchester Van Ness and strengthen the regional medical and research hub at Morris Park with direct access to regional public transit. By providing access to Johnson Housing along the underutilized Amtrak right-of-way with its mostly manufacturing industrial uses, will direct development in a way that protects the character of the existing neighborhoods while allowing for growth around the transit stations. While separate from the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity zoning proposal, this neighborhood plan shares several of its goals: increased residential density closest to transit access, mandatory inclusionary housing requirements, and elimination of parking mandates for new housing developments. These measures will create more affordable, healthier, and sustainable communities. We recognize the robust outreach and engagement that the city and MTA have undertaken with local communities over many years, which was validated by a favorable vote by two of the three local community boards with jurisdiction, as well as from the Bronx Borough Board and Bronx Borough President. We urge local council members, DCP, and other city agencies to continue this community outreach. AIA New York further urges that DCP and other city agencies work together to leverage the full potential of this rezoning by making public investments in critical infrastructure, including open space, streetscape improvements, schools, libraries, basic services like power, sewer water, and public safety. By accommodating sustainable growth and connecting our residents to job opportunities, services, and recreations locally and beyond--
Your time is expired. Thank you.
Can I just finish the--
Yes, you can wrap it up.
The coordinated land use transportation planning approach of the Bronx Metro North Plan serves as a model for thoughtful urban planning throughout the city. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any questions for this panel? There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. The last panel that we'll be calling up is Logan Ferris and Mary Pearson. We'll begin with Mary Pearson.
You may begin.
Ms. Pearson, are you there? Ms. Pearson, can you unmute? Okay, we'll come back to Ms. Pearson. We could begin with Logan Ferris. Logan--
You hear me?
Oh, yes, we hear you, Ms. Pearson. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. You heard that?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Hi?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, boy.
We can hear you, Ms. Pearson. Yes, we can hear you. She's having technical difficulties, so we could move to Logan Ferris.
You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley, and members of the Subcommittee for the opportunity to testify in favor of the proposed Bronx Metro North rezoning. My name is Logan Ferris, and I serve as the Political Director of Open New York. Open New York is an independent grassroots pro-housing nonprofit. We have 12 chapters across the state and more than 600 volunteer members. New York faces a severe housing shortage. In February, the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey revealed that the rental vacancy rate had fallen to 1.4%, the lowest point since 1968. This means that we're experiencing the tightest housing market in decades. New Yorkers are feeling these pressures. Evictions have increased, asking rents for unregulated housing have skyrocketed, and newly-issued building permits have plummeted. In Bronx community districts 9, 10, and 11, nearly 55% of current residents are rent-burdened, while nearly 30% are severely rent-burdened. Without a significant increase in the housing supply in this and other areas, the housing crisis for these residents will not end. We cannot fix the city's housing crisis without building more homes, and every neighborhood must do its part, especially neighborhoods that are benefiting from billions of dollars in new transit investments. The city has repeatedly called on suburban communities to allow transit-oriented development adjacent to Metro North and Long Island Railroad stations. We must also do so within our own boundaries. These proposals will bring exciting new residential and commercial developments to these neighborhoods, as we have seen happen in cities and states across the country that have implemented transit-oriented development. We are pleased to see that community feedback from the scoping process is taken into consideration, and the current plan will now include more affordable housing than originally proposed, as is the plan will create 7,500 much-needed new homes and 10,000 new jobs near transit. We encourage the council to pass the current proposal without cuts to the density and to maintain the elimination of residential parking mandates for the new special district. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. And lastly, we hear from Mary Pearson.
Thank you for your time. Again, everybody, I'm addressing the Co-op City Station access problem. On north side of the tracks, Metro North Station entrance on Erskine Place, reachable only by traveling through Co-op City Section 5, is planned. Access from the south side of the tracks, though possible and vital, is not planned. Fuller station access would greatly benefit Section 5, all of Co-op City, and our Manhattan-bound neighbors. All it requires is funding. Much has changed since I put together a video called "All Aboard" that shows how the destroyed westbound Pelham Parkway entrance ramp to I-95 North, Ramp C, could have been incorporated into the plan to facilitate full access to the south side of the station. Full south side of the station access is no longer possible. However, partial access by vehicle and foot remains possible. A new pathway along the destroyed Ramp C route leads close to the recently blocked-off path to the railroad tracks. It appears to be, but not wide enough for buses, wide enough to facilitate entry-exit for vehicles via a cul-de-sac-type turnaround. It opens a short distance from the path to the tracks and therefore continuing on to the railroad tracks. However, a newly-planted field of trees separates that opening from the road to the tracks. I urge Councilmembers Riley and Marmarado to fight for the needed additional access point and the additional staircase elevator array to get to the station from the south side of the tracks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. If there are any more members of the public who is to testify regarding the Bronx Metro North rezoning and text amendment proposal remotely or here in person, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms or press the raise hand button now, and we will identify you. We will stand at ease for a couple of seconds. There being no other members of the public who is to testify on the preconsiders LU's for U-LUP number C240015ZMX and N240016ZRX relating to the Bronx Metro North rezoning and text amendment proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. As I mentioned at the start of this hearing, a separate public hearing will be held later this month regarding the street mapping action related to this proposal, at which the public will have the opportunity to testify. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, especially Councilmember Marmarado, who stayed to the end with me, Subcommittee Council, Land Use, and other council staff, and the Sergeant-at-Arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.